Sorry, everybody, for the delay. We had an executive session that went a lot longer, as you know, because we waited patiently for three hours than expected. We were just waiting for two more members. This is Lawler and this is Hugh to come back and then we will get started. Thank you, sorry.
Give a roll here. All right, let's call the orders. Brandi Wine heads our district school board meeting for May 2nd. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Cooper, can I get a roll call, please?
This is Edgar here. Mr. Hatter?
Yes, here.
Mr. Hattichell?
Here.
Mrs. Hahn?
Here.
Mr. Rightnow?
Here.
Mr. Shee?
Here.
Mr. Stupit?
Here.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Reimer?
Here.
Nine problems.
Moving on to recognitions. Mr. Potager.
We're good evening, everybody, and we have some very exciting and maybe a little bit sad, maybe not for the employee, but for us, this district recognitions today. We have three wonderful people that have been with the district for many years that are going to be retired. So, we will call each of them up individually. The first one we like to call up is Ms. Roseanne Tighery. So, Roseanne, if you don't mind coming up, and Mr. Jitsch, if you don't mind joining us. So, Roseanne, on behalf of 31 years in the school district, we'd like to present you a fact as a small token of our appreciation for everything you have done for the school. It's truly an honor to work with you, to work side by side with you. You have so many community connections who care so deeply about this district, so deeply about these students. It is, like I said earlier, it's a loss to us, but a great opportunity for you to take the next step in life. Congratulations.
Speaking on behalf of Mrs. Tagerix. Mrs. Tagerix has been with the district for 31 years and in a variety of different capacities and doing different positions. But I've learned to know Roseanne in the four years as our high school attendance secretary, which is a pretty interesting job in and of itself. Because if you've ever seen a high school in the morning and a late high school in the morning, they are often not the most pleasant of children, especially if they're running late or have something going on. Mrs. Tagerix has always been a positive and friendly face for them. And then, over the last two years, all of the challenges that we've had to face, just with attendance in general, and with virtual and in and out, and those things that we've been able to shift and adapt to. You know, Mrs. Tagerix has been with us every step of the way. She's been a positive resource for me since my very first day in the building. And then I know that I'm gonna miss giving her a hard time every single day. You know, but more than that, just everything that she's brought to our office. She's been really, really wonderful, and I'm gonna miss her very dearly, which is why I'm gonna ask her to come every single day.
About 7:15 till 8:00.
But really, really a wonderful resource in the district. And I love the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. It has really been a pleasure, and I don't wanna have to cry. I'm happy, but I'm also sad because it's been my family for 31 years. I've been through a lot, which you know, Andrew. We were at a couple of buildings, and I've enjoyed everything I've done in all the years that I've been here. So, I'm gonna thank everybody, the opportunity to have me here.
Always with smiles and positivity.
I try.
Roseanne is joined, see me by her husband, right? So, thank you for all you've done to support her there in the process as well. So, next up, I know it says Mrs. Walowski. She actually is being recognized this evening over at Lions Field right now, which is a athletic hall of fame. So, she's gonna try to sneak over here in the middle of all that so we can recognize her this evening. So, we're gonna put that one to hold. The next one we'd like to recognize is Mrs. Carol Garinger. Carol, if you don't mind coming up. Carol, do you look at your agenda? Forty years. Forty years dedicated just to Brandywine.
Well, I don't know. I think you're talking real peas or...
It's a trip. Carol has just been, and Michael is gonna share a few words, but Carol's just been such a wonderful, positive person within our school district. I had an opportunity to work with Carol directly when I was at Rockland, and she knew every student by name. She still does that on the elementary school. She has such a personable, caring approach to her. On a personal bias, I would get adult lunch as a principal, and then she'd take all the leftovers, throw it in the food line, bring it to my office, and I was running around crazy, and she'd prepare me too. So, Carol, thank you so much for 40 years of service. That's awesome.
So, I wrote a lot of notes about Carol since it was 40 years. So, I got to know Carol when I came to Brandywine. But just kind of a history about Carol. She spent about two and a half years as an on-call cafeteria employee. And then she began working the three-hour day shift at the middle school, I think, for Brandywine back in 1982, before she moved over to Rockland, which I think became her home for quite a few years.
Yeah, my car didn't know how to go another direction. It closed.
I would just say, looking back through the last 40 years, working at Brandywine Food Service Operations, it's very different than it was back then. You know, gas prices were...
I will agree with you there. It's not even close to the same.
So, we know it's all different. And then especially the rules and regulations that have increased and influenced how she's had to operate her kitchen over the years. However, it was during those periods of change that Carol has shown her excellent ability to adapt to change and the drive she possessed to ensure smooth operations continued during all those times, most notably during COVID. Regardless of the year during Carol's...
And I didn't have to put up with a lot, too.
Regardless of the year during Carol's career, Carol has always been an excellent employee, so much so that she assumed the head cook position during the '87, '88 school year with recommendations from Ms. Lennart and Mr. Fisher. So, going back to them. So, year after year, whether it be Rockland now or elementary school or one and only, Carol has run a smooth kitchen and provided quality meals to our youngest learners. I would say my initial interactions with Carol was when they were helping serve lunches at the high school at Camp Spark Kiddos, and she's saying how you're given too many options on the condiments. So, this just shows, you know, she really, she enjoys the young kiddos. You give them too many, whether it be honey mustard, ketchup, barf, kielbasa for the chicken pan, they really spouse the line. They can't make a decision, it's the greatest thing. So, I would say she was looking forward to go back to the elementary and knowing those kiddos. And I also did learn that elementary kids do not prefer wraps. They enjoy sandwiches.
There's a lot of things they don't.
Carol has really taught me a lot this year when it comes to menu planning and whatnot. So, for me, I haven't been here all that long, but I'll remember Carol as having the most organized walk-in cooler and freezer, where everything is perfectly labeled. So, when we had our audit this year and they said they were going to the elementary school, I was like, oh, thank God. I have nothing to worry about. But she's always that individual who's committed to her work, the kids, her kitchen, and as Andrew said, the staff. And whether, would you know, part of her responsibility or not, she's always that first person to lend a helping hand. Lastly, I think most districts have their go-to people. These are the people who know how something has been done in the past or where to find something. They're people who can handle a difficult situation. I would say Carol has been one of our Brandywine's go-to people for 40 years now. So, she's leaving some big shoes to fill. We know that Carol's looking forward to retirement. I think we can speak for her saying, for everyone, saying that we are excited to wish Carol health, and we hope you start checking off some items on that retirement bucket list. And in my search today, when I was trying to find out what you've done over the last 40 years, I heard that you guys did graduate from the same high school. And you're now retiring from the same district. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. I'm sure somebody will fill my shoes really soon.
But it won't be you.
Well, thank you.
Congratulations, Carol.
Thanks.
Next up, we have our New Heights Awards winners for the month. And so, we have two wonderful people to recognize this evening. The first one we're gonna start with is Mackenzie. Mackenzie, if you don't mind coming up. Mackenzie is, then we go from the extreme, 40 years to relatively new. She's recently joined the Brandywine team. And so, Mr. Jitsch is gonna join and share a few words here. But Mackenzie, I'm just gonna read the two recognitions of why you are receiving the New Heights Award. So, the first one is, Mackenzie is new to me in the library this year, and it's been amazing, exclamation point, exclamation point. She comes in with a positive attitude every day, full of ideas to help promote the library. She is creative, and even though she works in three different areas of the district, she gives her all. It is a pleasure to work with her every day. The second one is, I would like to nominate Mackenzie for the New Heights Award. Mackenzie has definitely been an asset to helping the high school office. She fills in with me when I am not in, and definitely knows most of the job, and is a pleasure to work with. So, Mackenzie, congratulations on the New Heights Award. And Mr. Jitsch?
Yeah, we had a retirement up in our library at the end of last school year. So, after some creative staff, like Ms. Kelly, was nice enough to share with me her phenomenal library assistant, in Mackenzie, who came and joined us this year. So, I think Mackenzie wins for most interesting day every day, because she starts her day out at the high school in our library, and then sometimes coming down into the main office with some tests there. But then gets to transition over from the high school to the elementary school. So, in a day, you see the 18-year-olds, and then you also see some of our eight-year-olds in the same day. And just the positivity and creativity that Mackenzie's led into both, not just both libraries, but to our office. She's phenomenal with the kids, and it's been a real sort of pleasure to work with. So, thank you so much for all you've been doing this year.
Mackenzie, what's the current project going on in the library? I know you have all kinds of art things always going on in there.
Currently at the high school, it's popcorn thing. In the elementary, all the Lego stuff.
She has all these really amazing things she does within the library to make it much exciting, fun, and as you can hear, different things. So, Mackenzie, thank you for what you've brought to the school district and for supporting the library for our students. Congratulations. Our next recipient, and Mr. Jitsch will stay up here, is Michelle Moore. This is Miss Moore, if you don't mind coming up here. I'll read the recognition for Miss Moore. Miss Moore did a phenomenal job with teachers, students, all about entrepreneurialism. Students worked on creating a food truck business. They planned on the marketing aspects involved in creative menus, setting prices, and designing logos. In addition, they planned a presentation for peers, teachers, and staff. This presentation required them to consider things like word choice, slogans, and jingles. They committed to use the point-of-sale simulation to engage participants and create a fun competition among classes. All in all, this experience was a great way to engage students beyond the textbook and provide them an experiential learning experience. So, I had an opportunity to go over, it was so neat. They used the entire wrestling room, and all the kids had a tri-fold poster board set up with their type of food truck menu they're doing, and they had to give a rationale why they chose that. They had to come up with all the marketing pieces behind it. And then all the students and staff walked through with big money, not with money, and then purchased different food items from the food trucks. So, it was a great candle experience. That's just one of the tiny, tiny, tiny things she does in the host of all the influences you have within the school district.
Yeah, I think for me, Miss Moore provides so many different opportunities for our students, whether it's through SAV, through FBLA, through the business courses and accounting that she offers. There's so many opportunities that Miss Moore exposes to our students every single day. And for those things that are not just gonna help them now when they're in high school, but more importantly, when they're out in the real world, whether it be college or if they start their careers. And to see all of, and to see our students engaging in internships, or you oversee the school store, all of the different things that she's woven into the building. It's really, you know, an essential piece of what's going on for the kid. And she's just awesome with our students and the opportunities that she provides.
So, Miss Moore, congratulations. And finally, we have one more recognition, and that is to recognize our board representatives and our students. Unfortunately, we only have one with us this evening, but we'll recognize Tatiana. Tatiana, this is a certificate of appreciation from the school board for your service as a school board representative for this school year. You have done a phenomenal job of coming in every meeting, writing the grade report, just being in tune with the principals, and getting to hear the different things that are happening, and be able to sit and appreciate more. I'll top off the other thing you do. Congratulations. I want to be sure to recognize Lauren and Megan who testified this certificate. We wanted to do that this evening, because this is the May meeting, obviously, but the June meeting is until after graduation, so it's over June 13th. And so, we wanted to have Tatiana to recognize Tatiana. Congratulations, Tatiana, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so who is yours, Tatiana?
The elementary school, third grade students will have their step-off day on May 9th. They will get to visit the intermediate school and fourth-grade classrooms. They will have the opportunity to participate in a scavenger hunt, try out the lockers, and have lunch in the cafeteria. It's a great transition opportunity for third graders before they move on up to intermediate school. The Kinder Concert will take place on May 10 at 6:00 PM in the middle school auditorium. The students have been practicing their parts, sign language, and songs for this highly anticipated performance. The elementary school open house and art show will take place on May 17 and 18. Please stop by to see the students' work on display. Kindergarten screenings will take place on June 6th and 8th. There are currently 68 students registered. May is a busy month in the intermediate and middle school. In addition to sporting events and spring concerts, each grade will be participating in trips. The eighth grade will be visiting Gettysburg National Park tomorrow. Seventh grade recently visited the Berks Nature Preserve and received compliments from the staff there as the most well-hated and focused group that they have worked with. The fifth and sixth grade will soon be visiting camp, sixth graders. Were not able to attend last year as fifth graders due to COVID, but everyone is excited to attend, including the high school student chaperones. Finally, fourth grade will visit Old Brookdale Railroad later in May. The last 22 days of school are also a busy time as the middle school is preparing for award ceremonies on May 31st, field days on June 1st and 2nd, Hershey Park trips for music on May 13th, and a new activity where eighth graders are going to have an 80-speed send-off celebration on May 20th. The high school music tournament held their senior citizens concert last Friday after school. They'll be holding their spring concert tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the middle, in the high school auditorium for the community. Concert band, jazz band, concert choir, chamber singers, and turtleneckers will be performing. The high school music award ceremony will be held on May 10 at 7:00 PM, and the senior showcase will be held on May 25 at 7:00 PM. These will both be in the high school auditorium. On Saturday, the sophomore class held a spring carnival with a candy hunt, food rebus, and carnival games with help from the art and drama clubs. There was a great turnout, and the sophomore class made over $1,000. This Friday is prom, prom will be held at Shepherd Hills Event Center from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. AP exams begin for students this week and continue through next week. Keystone will follow the week after. National Honor Society induction will take place for current juniors on May 13 at 6:00 PM in the high school auditorium. The BH Clothing Circle will be holding their last event of this school year on Saturday, May 14. We will be laying out free clothing in the high school cafeteria from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. In sports news, Nate Berger qualified for the District 3AA tennis playoffs and will compete this Friday, May 6. In addition, Nate Berger and Brian Sexton qualified for the District 3AA doubles tennis championships starting on May 13. All other spring teams are in contention for postseason play. The annual All-Sports banquet will take place on Thursday, May 19 at 6:00 PM. On Wednesday, May 4, the annual sports signing day will be held starting at 1 in the high school library. Garner Wessel will be signing with Alvernia, Jayden Richards with Penn State Berks, Megan Chu, service to sales, Dylan Reiner with Penn Tech, Dylan Cortez with Calumet College of St. Joseph's, and Elena Graff with Coustown University. Lastly, high school graduation will take place on June 1 at Oakdale Field House in Coustown.
Thank you very much. Well done. I'm just adding one of those events in my calendar. That was a lot. There's a lot of things happening within the school. Excellent job summing that up. Good luck with the clothing, Kat, next weekend.
This is time for a public comment. Anyone would like to address the board?
Yes, so, as you may or may not be aware, US News and World Report recently came out with their annual high school rankings, and we now have slipped below Reading to be ranked last in Berks County. So, last in Berks County. Our test scores that are reported in that report are abysmal, and the AP participation rate, along with the performance on those AP exams, is also poor. And I spoke directly with Andrew about this last week. I'm wondering what the board is doing or looking at to improve this rather black eye on our school activity.
So, we spoke the other day, as you mentioned. Just for the kind of dedication, we had a long conversation, but the gist of it really focused in on the Keystone Exam score as well as our philosophy for AP. So, two pieces. One, the Keystone Exam scores that are being used at the state level are, if you go back last year, we had a gap because of COVID year before that. There was no press date at all. Keystone exams, just for everyone's knowledge, there's three Keystone exams that you have to have for graduation. Have an Algebra I exam, you have to have an English literature exam that you have to pass, you have to be able to pass a biology exam. Originally, there was a host of seven or nine of these, and because of funding, those got cut back to those three. So, that's why they're kind of random courses. But those three you have to pass in order to graduate at the state level. So, when you go back and track our students, really, you're looking at the age that's essentially three years old because of the COVID gaps in between there. And so, to answer the point directly, what are we doing? So, we've done a lot in between there. We've evaluated our curriculum and reshaped our curriculum. We've invested in new resources, staffing-wise. We've invested in intervention specialists to work with students that are struggling. So, we can go in and just students that are struggling there, particularly in this Keystone Exams, particularly in Algebra I, we can reshape that conversation and support those students. When this first hit us a couple of years ago, we came to the board, and at that point, we invested in curriculum specialist as well as instructional specialist. And so, those folks are working to work directly with the teachers on the curriculum side and work directly with teachers on the instructional side. And so, those things that help the professional development side of it, to help our teachers grow and conversely help our students grow, has been occurring as well. So, there's a lot of steps that have been put in place. The final thing I'd like to mention with Keystone is the restructuring of our Algebra I. We talked about this at the last budget meeting, but just again, for the dedication of everyone. Previously, we would test Algebra I primarily in eighth grade to ninth grade. We shifted that focus down to now seventh and eighth grade is where the primary amount of our students take the Algebra I exam. And it allows those students that are taking it in ninth grade the additional two years or so of pre-algebra and other resources to be able to be a little bit more prepared for that. You take the Keystone Exam when you are taking the course. So, English literature, you take in tenth grade because that's when you have the English literature. Biology, typically tenth grade because that's when you have biology. Algebra is the weird one because some kids are taking Algebra in seventh, seventh, eighth, seventh, ninth, and other grades. So, that Algebra I is one that we've seen success by shifting it to the middle school. And really, that was a direction from Mr. Green when he came in and reevaluated it and brought his professional experience to this. The other thing to note with Keystone Exams is there are composite score. And so, there's a bunch of different iterations. When you look at a composite score, there's three different sections to the Keystone...
Two modules.
Two modules, thank you.
Per exam.
Two modules per exam. And so, there's different ways to slice and dice how the students are able to actually pass the exam. But those are the things that we've been looking at on the Keystone Exam. The problem is that it's old data, and we've been kind of hinged on old data for the last two, three years. And it's certainly not for lack of dedication from our staff as well as our administrative team supporting that, and our kids. I mean, you hear something like, I leaned over to Mr. Wagner while Tatiana was speaking, were recognized as the best behaved group that came through a field trip. Those are the things that get celebrated. It's data that's old, and unfortunately, our students aren't doing well in that area of the state exam. That doesn't mean that our students aren't doing well. We have, we have anecdotally a lot of students that go on to do great things and are going on to post-secondary. And the way I always look at it is, I've always said, since I've taken a superintendent, I want to make sure our students are prepared for that next step in life, whether that's the workforce, the military, post-secondary, two-year, four-year, wherever you look at it. And so, when I look at that, how to gauge that, I primarily look at our students that are going into secondary, post-secondary, needing to take remedial courses. Are they not prepared for college? And that's typically not the case. They're prepared, and they're doing very well in college. And so, there's this dichotomy of what we're seeing when students leave us versus what they're doing when they're here with the test scores. And that absolutely, you used the word "black eye", it is absolutely a black eye. From the AP exam world, which is where a lot of the data pieces come from, the AP exams, a few years ago, many years ago, 10 years ago, the AP exam was a requirement. If you took the AP course, you had to take the AP exam, and the district paid for it. As a funding mechanism, that was removed, and it became optional. I noticed a few more members, we've kicked around the idea, do we put that back in place and make it a requirement? Philosophically, I disagree with that completely. And here's the reason. Because we've invested heavily into enrollment. And so, most of our AP courses are also dual enrollment eligible. And what dual enrollment is, is that a student can take an AP, take a course that may be AP-eligible, let's just use the course, has AP and dual enrollment. That dual enrollment course, the curriculum is given to Redding Area Community College. Redding Area Community College verifies that. There is a process for verifying in the future as well. And then that course becomes a graduate course. So, parents, students now have the opportunity to take the AP course. They can sign up to take the AP exam and/or they can sign up for the dual enrollment. If they sign up to take the AP exam, there's a fee associated with that test. And then, they have to score a three or above out of five to be able to be able to get that college credit. It's not a guarantee. If they take the course, do well in it, they get the credit from Redding Area Community College. And that is a reciprocal agreement with all the state universities, and the majority of the private universities are accepting those credits as well. So, the risk-benefit process of it, why would you pay to take an exam that you maybe don't get the points for and the credit for versus taking a dual enrollment course and getting the three credits and then being able to have that as a transcript going on to post-secondary? The benefit and the risk analysis of that obviously is more in tune with going dual enrollment, and we've supported dual enrollment, and we pushed dual enrollment, and we invested more heavily in dual enrollment versus an AP exam. The downside of that is philosophically, because we've done that, now we don't have the AP exam participation because we're funneling or encouraging kids to go down the dual enrollment pathway. I do not believe that we should force kids to take an exam just to make ourselves look better as a school district. That philosophically does not make any sense at all. We've all... That philosophically does not make any sense at all. We've always argued about state exams, PSSAs, and how can we make, why are we forcing our kids to take a P S S A? This is crazy. But then if we conversely do that as a district and force a kid to take an A P exam, that just completely flies in the face of what we stand for, which is kids. That's not good. So that's the long short answer of, did I miss anything, Mr. Wolf? I see your hands going up before I turn it over.
Yeah, if you don't mind, obviously with something like this, it's complex, right? There are a lot of components that go along with this. And thank you, everybody, for coming out. You've heard from me plenty about this. There are a lot of components that go into something like this. And I always struggle with how much information, you know, is too much information, how much of it is overwhelming or saturating? But I do think one of the other bigger components that is worth noting is of the thirteen in-person A P courses that we have, nine of those are both A P and dual enrollment, as Mr. Potager was mentioning. You could do it as either. The way that these systems actually end up working is PIMS, the Pennsylvania Information Management System, where we have to submit all of our course data, isn't the most refined system. And as such, what ends up happening is all of these courses that are actually, it could be this or this, the system's not complicated enough to be able to do both. So what ends up happening is these courses end up getting coded to dual enrollment. So it doesn't look like we have thirteen A P courses. So there has been a lot of communication back and forth between P D E and as we've been transitioning to Infinite Campus to try to find out, does Infinite Campus have a better way? Our new student information system, as we currently are in e-school, transitioning to Infinite Campus, does Infinite Campus have a better way to almost trick the PIMS submissions into accurately reflecting what our courses actually are? And the long and short of it is, no, it's an issue with PIMS. So then we were back and forth with Pennsylvania Department of Education a lot this year. And we found out that there is an option to do a manual override after we submit our initial PIMS report. And so what we've done in my office is we've actually instituted a process and procedure that works with our PIMS coordinator to do a manual re-entry of our courses that are both A P and dual enrollment. So effective this school year, which would be then reported within next school year, we are now able to more accurately reflect these nine courses as both an A P and a dual enrollment course. So on things like these types of reports, it will more accurately reflect our true A P course offerings. So again, there are many nuances that go into a report like this. But that is, I would say, one of the other bigger items that you as a board and community should be aware of. Again, I tried to communicate in the message that was sent out to the community that there are some concerns here, especially when we talk about Keystone Exams. I would say, you know, some of our performance in that area is a bigger concern than necessarily what we're doing with our A P course offerings. We have, for the school district size that we are, a plethora of advanced placement opportunities for our students, whether it's in-person or it's through our virtual academy. I wouldn't say that that is an area of concern. Even our performance on the A P exams, we're holding up just fine. We have to better support students that need additional remediation as they leave the middle school to the high school. We do see some students falling off. And later in this school year, at some point, we are going to be talking to you about how we can potentially increase the instructional minutes for our secondary schools without impacting the bottom line budgetarily as well as the schedule for everybody across the district. So I think that's really the biggest area that we need to continue to focus on as a school district. We have the right curriculum, the right curriculum resources. We have the right types of instruction occurring. We have the right supports for those instructors now. There is no gap on the curriculum side. Our instructional practice has increased significantly. But those students that need additional support, need additional support and you need time to do that. And that's really, again, that missing piece to the puzzle. I will stop talking now. I'm sorry.
So in short, there's a lot of pieces that we put into place three years ago when we saw these test scores. So those pieces have not been tested yet and we should have updated results come fall, December time from.
So I understand though, did we not take Keystone's last year?
We did last year. The data, yes, yes.
And how did that work out? How does it compare to what was? I understand that what the U S News and World Report has is maybe two or three-year-old data.
Yes.
Two thousand nineteen, two thousand nineteen. They're using data from two thousand seventeen to two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so what is the twenty twenty-one data show?
You want me to go into that?
Sure.
Sure. So obviously, we have to keep in mind that throughout this time period, there was the pandemic, right? So there are many variables that get entered into, you know, breaking this data down. What we were anticipating was a bigger regression than we saw. We actually saw an increase in our performance in Literature and Biology, but we still didn't see any additional growth in the area of secondary high school Algebra One, which is really where we need to focus. That's our biggest weakness as a school district.
And do we understand how those results compare to other schools in our surrounding community? Do we see those results at the same time?
So normally, there's more transparency with that assessment data. This year, there has not been the county-wide comparison data shared with school districts as there usually has been.
So something else to just make note of, right? If you looked at how they break down their metrics, forty percent of that score is based on A P results. Forty percent. Thirty percent is based off the number of A P tests you offer, how many of your students take them and what your results are for that. Ten percent deals with underserved population and how they do on the A P test. So as a district, since we, you know, our philosophy has been to push dual enrollment over the A P test because we don't reimburse or we don't pay for the students to take the test, we are automatically forty percent behind the eight ball. Because the kids that are taking it are just taking it. It's not like they're being forced to take it. They're not being mandated that they have to take this test. So I mean, like, I'm going to use my daughter, for example. Samantha's leaving Brandywine with almost thirty college credits. Because we took advantage of dual enrollment for the entire thing because it was one of those things, you know, ninth grade, you don't know where your kid's going to go to school. So am I going to do A P results that if you get a four, maybe they take it, maybe they don't. If you get a three, they definitely don't take it, even though you still passed. So you have to get fives. My daughter's not a good test eater. So we went the dual enrollment route where she still gets the credits that are guaranteed to be taken at state schools. And luckily, she's going to private university and they're taking all of them just as electives, not as actual classes. So it's one of those things where, you know, as a board, I think we need to take a look at, okay, do we reimburse or do we pay for those tests, right? Because we're going to keep getting shellacked by U S News and World Report if they don't change the way they run their rubric.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I guess, the rub, right? You fundamentally disagree with it, but every year, there's going to be a report that comes out that drags our name in the mud. And how much do you want that to happen? I mean, that's a problem. And it's not just that, though. The fifty percent, okay, I understand it. I understand test results are from twenty seventeen to nineteen, and that's why I'm very interested in how we compare in twenty twenty-one. Because you can look flatly across the other schools in the county and all of their test results are pretty much well above ours in each one of those areas. I get that the data is old.
In math, in math, and in literature, biology, we're holding up.
So I guess, I understand that it's a complex issue. I'm just wondering, you know, here we are a year later. I attended a similar meeting last year where it was like, we're going to do things, let's fix it. I understand that the circumstances are that, yeah, it sucks. Seventeen through nineteen is still the data that's being used, but here we are another year later and it's worse.
But I mean, I think the other thing philosophically is, do you want us teaching the kids how to learn or do you want us to teach them how to take a test?
Well, learning, being able to take a test is really important in college. If you want to get through college, you better be able to take an exam.
Well, you have to be able to take an exam.
You have to be able to be able to take an exam as well because that's how you get in.
Yeah, but we're not teaching them how to take a test in general. We're teaching them how to take that test, right? How to take that A P test or how to take that Keystone test. Because we've always been, and this has been going on, and I'm speaking to somebody that's been here for twelve years, right? That has always been our philosophy, is we want our kids to know how to learn, right? We could go the route of some of these magnet schools and just, you know, have our kids just rote memorization and churn out, you know, test results. But I don't think that's really necessarily what the community is wanting. And I understand your frustration because, trust me, when I'm getting a text message on Saturday afternoon from my brother-in-law crowing about how, you know, bad we did and how bad his school did, that stinks, you know, it hurts. But I do think that we have put a lot of things in place as a board over the last decade to try and make the experience better for our students, make sure that they're coming out as twenty-first century learners and that they are positioned for success when they go into post-secondary or they go into the workforce.
And I understand that education is a lot more than tests. I'm not saying that. But what we look, the exams are designed specifically to test whether the kids here are learning the content that the state is saying that they need to learn. And we're not performing well on them. And we can talk about rote memorization, but if the test we're struggling with is math, that's not a rote memorization thing. You either know the content and can test that you understand the content or you don't. So I'm just here to voice my frustration. Obviously, the rest of the community doesn't really feel the same way. So I won't take up much more of your time, but it continues to be an issue that I'm really frustrated with. And, you know, I might choose to do something else. I'm one person. But I can't take too many more years of this and have my kids in the district.
I think that we really need to, I'm going to agree to do, Mr. Womack. It's frustrating to see, it's frustrating to know I brought my kids into this district and get worried about it. But I feel like with these test scores, they didn't just sit here and say, we're not going to do anything about it. I've seen a lot of the administration put in effort and figure out how to make this change. And unfortunately, we had a pandemic and now we have to wait probably another three years before you're going to see that change in result. Because it's not going to be next year that you're going to see the numbers skyrocket. Our kids are dealing with such learning loss right now that we don't know what is going to be the outcome in five years for some of these kids that are going to step up and not take these tests. So I don't love the results either and I don't love having, you know, there isn't a quick, easy answer. We can't turn these kids around and say, now you have to do math better. They're putting systems in place. And I think we just have to have a little faith that they're trying their best through change in a pandemic and putting these new agendas out there for these kids. So I don't, there isn't going to be an answer, I don't think, that you want to hear right now because they don't think that we know where we're going yet either with it, so.
Well, I guess I would ask then, if we've got new tech, when we get new test scores in, it'd be interesting to publicize those, to know what they are. And everyone went through the same pandemic, so let's see how they compare to other school districts. If we stayed flat, we lost a little and everybody else lost a lot, well, then clearly what we did was working. If we went down a little and everyone else somehow managed to stay the same or go up despite the same pandemic we were in, then we fundamentally got a problem with what we're doing. So I guess that's the end of my commentary.
I just want to add one concluding thought. I can tell you, and whether you trust it or not, that's up to you, that everything that we should be doing as a school district is absolutely being done. And I'm confident with the steps that we've taken, if we are able to add this additional instructional time, that is the exact recipe that every school district is looking for. We have the right curriculum. We have the right resources. We have the right instruction. We have the right support for that instruction. And then we'd have the right remediation for those students that may be struggling as well as the enrichment opportunities for those students that are ready to advance. It just is going to take some time at this point. And we do that academic data presentation annually where we do dive into everything, including surrounding school district data.
All right. And I do appreciate, Mr. Womack, you coming and voicing that because as you pointed out, the rest of, there's crickets and that means a whole lot, you know, the community members and parents speaking out because without you guys, we wouldn't have success to, you know, take these strides. So thank you.
While they're not here tonight, they definitely voiced it to all of us here on the board. You are not alone and we really appreciate you coming out and wanting what's best for our kids, so.
That's a problem.
I have a quick question. We got the same email last year in May with the, they used the same numbers in the report? Because last year, I just went back on the email and the content on another, or one of yours. We got like the same ranking email, so they still haven't updated their numbers yet and what they're using, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same report for the last three years that continues to bite us until the new data comes out.
Using that same data. So it just hasn't been updated data, so.
So two quick thoughts, and I think this is a balancing act so that if we pursue these ideas, we wouldn't want to look defensive as a district. But this messaging and some of these nuances that help folks interpret and better understand the poor-looking performance, if you will, you know, does it make sense to do a really well-crafted thoughtful response to the Reading Eagle as a letter to the editor? Does it make sense to do a very thoughtful and well-crafted and detailed communication to U S News, World and Report and the research agency that they engage with to conduct this study to help them understand from the ground why, for example, relying exclusively on A P data for advanced courses may not be as smart as they think it is? To, for example, frame up our emphasis and success with dual enrollment? So that maybe over time, and I doubt just one voice like ours would shift their whole methodology, but maybe over time, it would enlighten them that their standard model may not be getting at all of the innovative type things that districts like ours from time to time are able to do. So those are two thoughts. Again, they have to be really well-crafted so that we don't look like we're just being defensive. But I think there's surreal power in these dialogues and this content to help folks understand it's not exactly as the headline makes it look.
My personal opinion is, I think they're both good thoughts, but I think to your point, the letter to Reading Eagle wouldn't appear defensive. That doesn't buy you anything. Your thought about engaging U S News and World Report and their potential consulting agencies that they utilize, that's not a bad idea because apparently our best thinking here is what we're doing is better than the A P exam. So, you know, we're one voice, but there's probably every other school sitting below a third in their state might be looking at the same thing. So we might be one voice among hundreds and then maybe they'll consider it.
No, I think you just said something that maybe. I would say we're better than the A P exam. I think we're just using creative ways to benefit our students. We're thinking of different ways to get our students where they need to be.
Understood. I mean, don't take what I said wrong.
No, I just, it just made me think that, like, we're really focusing on our students and what they need and not, some of them don't need to go to college. Some of them just want to go to a two-year college and, you know, they have a year of it done or whatever, so. What?
So there's nothing wrong with two-year college.
No, I, I should do a college.
No, but I think you're right. I think it's, we offer, we offer different avenues, right? Like, that's the thing. For a student that wants to take the A P exam, we have the A P exam pathway. For the student that wants to take the dual enrollment pathway, we have that. And we have multiple ways for them to find or accumulate credits that ultimately they're buying at a much, much discounted rate that will then help them when they get to college. Two-thirds of our students, that's the data, so two-thirds of our students go on to some kind of post-secondary.
Right. So two-thirds, and we're reporting sixteen percent, right, in terms of the A P exam participation? So to that point, let's accurately reflect, two-thirds of our students are looking for post-secondary education or post, yeah, secondary education to some level. And maybe this dual enrollment represents that. I don't know what the numbers are, but if we go from sixteen to forty, that would be great. I think your point's a great one, though. The only way you make a change is if you engage with the ratings.
Yeah, and we will keep everyone updated as soon as we have new test scores and. Yeah, then we will keep everyone updated as soon as we have new test scores and hopefully it's more transparent that we can have an accurate comparison to other districts and try and beat U.S. News to the punch. Thank you again, Zach.
All right, hearing, seeing no one else is out there. Hearing, moving on to Board of Director of your court, do they get a motion or a second?
Some move sheets. Second right now.
So a couple items under the Board of Directors this evening. You have minutes from the April 4 meeting. Any questions on those or just something to be made? Second reading of policies, really no transition that has happened there. First reading of policies, the two I'd like to just point out to you, there's really not a lot of changes in maintenance, safety, property records, surplus of property, that's the red tag sale that we've, we've done historically in the past. But if you look at 210 in particular, there's a slight change and it has some significance to it. It's on the last page of 210 and there's two items that have been added, they're in green. And it's establishing in our policy that students can self-medicate while they're on a field trip. So obviously, that requires a lot of nurse oversight, issues, people doing that. But that is something that we have not historically done, but other districts have. And with the issue of nurse shortages and then having, having nurse on every field trip has become very cumbersome. So when we look at particularly our older students, this is a suggestion we're recommending to the board, it's linked directly, more importantly, to policy 210-1, which is the self-medication, self-administration of medication policy. This policy really came out due to Epi pens and allowing students to carry Epi pens and inhalers if they needed those. But we have expanded that to include more of that self-medication, self-administration medication while on field trips. And so that last page, five of six, really goes into that process of what a student must be able to do to demonstrate that they are able to do that self-medication. And then really, the most important thing is that the nurse has the chance to do the evaluation and determine if that student is, would be able to do so. Primarily, again, for our older students, but something I just wanted to make sure that you do and the board, what were some of the shifts in the policy that were recommended this evening?
So maybe right now, if they're on a field trip, the kids can self-administer an Epi pen or an, an Epi inhaler?
They can do that, yes. Those are the two things that were in the policy and continue.
All right. Did I also see in here that there was a auto ejector that we would have one in a main school? Is that a current thing?
Yeah. We have those within the nursing office. Um, yeah. Appointment of the School Board Treasurer for one year beginning July 1, 2022 and ending June 30, 2023. Mr. Sheets, are you interested in continuing your role? Hopefully.
Yes.
I have no problem considering the role. I really want you to do it.
Very good. You can put that in pen there, Mr. Sheets. You know, just did. I'll stop currently and highlight each one. And then the, the final one under E is to reaffirm KKLL, particularly Mr. Pratt's service, to be this school district solicitor for this upcoming year. That's a no change in the rate. There is no retainer for this, it is just a flat hourly rate. So we really appreciate the service that Mr. Pratt has provided for us the last few years and are very happy to recommend that we do that partnership. Moving on to committee reports. BCIU.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. Ragman. I did submit, like I do each month, a written report, just a couple of highlights that I wanted to draw your attention to. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the BCIU has celebrated, acknowledged and celebrated its 50 years of service. Actually, the anniversary was last year, but they couldn't do the event to celebrate. On the, the night of the board meeting, which was the 21st of April, there was a pretty special affair as it relates to Berks County Public Education. More than 100 attendees, including some dignitaries again, and some legendary folks in the worlds of public education around this county. So all of the superintendents were there, some former executive directors were there, really just special tribute to the work and the service that these individuals and that that organization has been doing over time in support of the 70,000 students in Berks County and all of the public school districts, the private schools, the CTCs, et cetera. So really special event. Two other quick acknowledgements. The Annie Sullivan Award occurs each year and that is an opportunity for folks to nominate individuals across the county that work within special education. 14 people were nominated. An individual from Conrad Weiser was the winner this year or the recipient, if you will, of the award, a gentleman who works with special ed, high school age kids primarily in Bethany's Children's Home. So again, another special event that acknowledges and celebrates the hard work and dedication of these special individuals. Two other quick things. So Ms. Brunner sent out an email a couple of weeks ago. I just want to make sure all of the board members received that and took two minutes, literally, it won't take more than two minutes, to click on the survey link and to just cast your vote or your ballot individually as a board member for the representatives from the other districts to the BCIU board that are up for reelection. It doesn't include Brandywine. I'm, I've got several more years of my term at the BCIU, but they look for full participation. And so I would just ask if you haven't already clicked on that and popped a couple of radio buttons, please take two minutes to do that. It would be much appreciated.
I'll thank absolutely up there again. I think you're putting two weeks to overtime. Just to freshen everyone's inbox.
That would be great. Thank you. And then the, the final thing from an advocacy perspective, and this may roll into what Mrs. Walliser is going to talk about with the Committee on Legislative Action, the Spring Day Appeal is declared for Tuesday, May 24th, and there's an eight-week campaign leading up to that where, again, advocacy, advocacy initiatives are underway around four key areas in education, early intervention, which again, serves about 60,000 three-to-five-year-olds across the state of Pennsylvania. We're looking for additional funding. Special ed is the second category, school-based mental health is the third category, and then the fourth category, personnel shortages. So a little bit different of an angle there from a business and operational perspective as opposed to from a academic perspective. One other just quick thing, I thought you might want to mention this. I believe we may have voted on it already on an agenda. The BCIU board did approve a contract for roughly $2,000 for check customization as it relates to Power School. So I thought you might want to just quickly speak to that. I don't know, Nicole or Tom, and who would be most appropriate to talk about what was needed there?
I'm sorry, I read a personnel thing that just popped up.
So it was an agreement with Power School Group for professional services needed to provide check customizations for Brandywine Heights, e-finance plus software application. It was roughly $2,000 investment over the next year.
Okay. That's you. Yep.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, I got a personal issue. So we have the construction and capital reserve accounts. And last year, our auditors, it suggested, and also state committees, suggested that we bring them all into the e-finance software. So we've been working on that. It's honestly taking longer than I would have suspected, but if we put it into all into the e-finance software, you have to set up the check stubs. So when we go to print checks, so that's what gave them work. So that's right now, kind of like a one-time loss. Right on. We got all of that and set up very different.
Thank you. And just the next meeting of the BCIU board is regularly scheduled for Thursday, May 19th. Back to you, Mr. Mike.
Thank you. BCTC, Mr. Sheets.
BCTC held their regular meeting on Wednesday, April 27th at the West Campus. Really of note, you guys should see this in JSC three, was really just tuition increases for the CL program. You know, it's anywhere from four and a half to 5%. It continues to be one of our just biggest programs that we have over there for adult education. Little known fact, BCTC runs eating adult education classes as well with welding and CEO rating are two biggest programs right now. Other things of note, students of the quarter this quarter for Brandywine were Dante Winekiller for Diesel Technologies, Samantha Gripping for Early Travel and Education, and that is at the East Campus, at the West Campus. We had Ethan Sidle in Advertising Art and Design Technology and Chase Heartline in Precision Machining Technology. Another thing of note is the annual HOSTA competition was held in King of Prussia. This is 100% self-serving because we had three students place in first place. Elijah Brown, I'm so sorry if I, if I butchered that or mispronounced that, in health occupations. She did a presentation on media awareness. And then the team of Samantha Sheets, cool, and there is my daughter, and Taylor Burns took first place in Medical Health Professional Program on Health Education. All three of those students will be getting all expense a trip to Nashville in the international competition this June. Our next meeting is going to be on May 25th, East Campus. Additionally, we also are going to be having Senior Recognition Night, if any board members would like to attend. That'll be May 31st, Tuesday. And just let me know, I need your statistics if you want to go.
Just conclude my report?
Perfect. I just said to Mr. Potager, that's something else that the test scores don't reflect, so that's.
Exactly. Yeah. Those two students that you talked about were not just Brandywine, that was amongst the whole BCTC.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, they have, they actually have multiple, so with the HOSTA competition, you have multiple teams going down and competing at, typically you have originally in the state because they had a truncated schedule this year because of COVID. They just held a state competition. Normally, you would then go to Nashville and International, however, they got rid of Nashville, it just goes right to the international competition. So when you go down, it's a three-day event where you go down, it's, you know, it's a bunch of different team-building exercises, educational opportunities, and then you actually do your competition. So I forget exactly, I want to say there was 18 kids that went down from Medical Health Professional Program, and then you also had an additional number of students from the health occupation that all went down there and competed as well. And that's, you know, all the students in Pennsylvania that participate in HOSTA, which is, oh, God, self-educational, something, and then, but it's future, future healthcare providers. They haven't gotten around to changing the acronym yet.
Same thing, but different. Did we put that on social media or what? That was the grades, like, relaxed out.
I know we recognize it, but I don't know how we push that out, to be honest.
We have Samuels celebrating the battles. Samuels very excited.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
Thank you.
I was going to say, negotiation. Oh, you sure, while you're there. Okay. I have nothing to report. Perfect, thanks. Nicole, VEITC.
Yeah, so I have nothing to report. The next session meeting is Thursday, June 30th.
Cola, Mrs. Walliser.
Tuesday, April 12th, we met virtually and Dr. Magada from the Political Affairs Department at Millersville shared his perspective on all different political issues going on and contributing education. In my report, I did link up some interesting articles based on some of the things that he brought to our attention. Of course, cyber schools and how much money is basically wasted, public money, by the way, taxpayer money. One of the biggest charter schools in Pennsylvania paid for Thanksgiving day parade below the ABC float, okay? Of course, they weren't disclose how much they had to pay, so our education advocates started digging and investigating. In four months alone, they used their tuition money to spend $632,000 on Target Media to get their name and their school out there for advertising. To put that into perspective, that is, in a four-month period, could have paid for seven or eight teachers, nurses, counselors, or librarians. So our property taxes can go up to pay for these cyber-charter tuition bills that are not being held accountable by our legislators in any way, shape, or form. Okay, that's my little sub-bacalma, sorry. My next area of concern is teacher salaries aren't keeping up with inflation. So the National Education Association is estimating that the average teacher's salary actually decreased by an estimated 3.9% when you take into consideration of inflation. This certainly can come at a worse time because teacher job satisfaction appears to be at an all-time low. The survey also found that 44% of teachers, so they're likely to quit and find a different job within the next two years. The average teacher salary for Pennsylvania is 71,479 from 2019 to 2020, 2021 to 2022, the average was 72,428, which is a 1.3 increase. Another wonderful news, legislation in Pennsylvania is considering vouchers again. It's bad for public education, it's bad for taxpayers. The current version of the voucher proposal could cost up to $107 million to school districts in Pennsylvania that are already underfunded. So EdVotersPA.org is a great site that already has emails for you to blast out to your legislators. That form wants to get your name and your email in there, or you can just click away and send it out via the different optics that are going on. So I would highly suggest going on that site and visiting our page on these matters.
Perfect, thank you. You still have the floor there, Policy Committee.
Yeah.
Hi, do we ever have meetings or is it?
It's just the back of the pre, the pre-policy discussion.
They invited one in, so.
It's just the committee to review policies before they go forward. That's why we said.
Okay, that's what it's about.
I was just going to have certification, you talk about the teacher shortage and the turnover, that 40% that are, you know, proposed, but I couldn't find it. But it's something like a third of the certifications that PD once put out is now what they're putting out. So that, the amount of people going into education is sharply dropping off, yeah. So where that goes in the future, we'll see. But yeah, that's absolutely, so one of the, from a legislative standpoint, the bills that are out there, people in the House right now, is to do a, a reimbursement for your college tuition if you graduate with a teaching degree and then stay with teaching for a certain amount of years afterwards. This statement then go back and refund. So it's, it's a very innovative way, I think, to attract educators and then have them stay and retain and then have a report at the end of that. We'll see if that goes through, but.
There was a slowdown out where they actually, the college students that were enrolled to be teachers, if they worked for the school district for a certain amount of time, the school district then was paying partial for their college education and ended up, those kids then went back and wanted to teach at that school, you know, that did that. And it was a great way to, because they're having such a time getting new teachers to come and teach them in their building room. I know, how do you find something like that?
Right.
You know, on our tape I listed to you, but I think there's going to have to be some more innovative ways to get people attracted to the education world to become teachers. It's just really the scary time.
Representative Brazis is the one that's putting that bill out there.
Okay.
Building and Construction Committee. So I've been giving the board updates in the week. We update some of it, we've pretty much wrapped up everything. The elementary school contracts have finally come through. And here, we're still kind of slowly chugging along. No tremendous needs to report now. Any additional board discussion? No? Your roll call, please.
Mrs. Avner, yes. Mr. Hahn.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Heem, yes. Mr. Raynaud.
Yes.
Mr. Heep.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mrs. Wallizer, yeah. Mr. Reckman.
Yes.
Nineties motion passes.
All right, moving on to business and operations report. We get a motion on a second. So there's sheets, second right now.
Thank you. So I would say May and June agendas are probably longest. So I'll kind of breeze through them and if we have any questions, we'll answer them. But to begin, we have items A through. D is the bills reports. I know there were some questions that were answered via email for those. So if anybody has any additional questions, I can answer them now. Item E, to accept the financial reports through March 31st. I do want to point out in the construction fund, I think it was during. Our most recent budget presentation or questions about kind of what we made on the investments of the bonds. So to me, we have made about 116,000 dollars. I would say most of it was during the 1922 school year. When we had the 20, the two series of 2019 bonds and the 2020 bond. And obviously, interest rates were more favorable then. So just kind of note on that. And then kind of get into item X, special education pupil services. Item one is to approve an agreement with the Richard Karen Foundation. For student assistance program at the, at all three buildings for 2223. You'll see a lot of these are renewals for the 2223 school year. Item two is to accept the MOU between Burke County Head Start and the Briny High School District, again, for the 2223 school year. And item three and four, these are waiver agreements with the district students for the 2223 school year. These typically stem off previous settlement agreements for students. And item G, we have nothing. Item H is facility maintenance. Number one is to ratize a change order for the playground. This is to relit paint the playground. You'll see also attached was, the project was originally approved back in September 2021. So you can see this is kind of a change order off that, it will be paid out of construction fund money, not general fund. Item two is to approve a proposal with this elevator to upgrade the high school elevator, obsolete door operating system at a cost of 29,250. Dollars, this is coming out of capital reserve funds. And then item three is to approve the coach stars proposal from Division Nine to install wall tile at the nurse's office and staff classroom. All keys at a cost of 2500 dollars. We would probably use construction fund money as a submission to the CCA plans, so it will not be general fund. Item four is to approve proposals for Division Nine to replace floor tile in the core areas. This is part of our floor replacement plan. The back gym corridors were missed in the JCPA projects, again, this will be capital reserve or construction fund money. Item five, item five is to approve a proposal without dropping fire. To do the fire extinguisher inspections for next year. This is a required yearly service for fire extinguishers at all three buildings. Division nine again, item six is to approve the Chris Star's agreement proposal from Division nine to stand and refinish the middle school gym floor. Typically, we stand and refinish it every other year. Between construction last year, it was the lead. So we have to have a harder standing at this time since the floor has some issues. That, you know, the normal standing and reco will not fix. Item seven, approve service.
Just to inject real quick there, it's a different company than what we typically use. We're not happy with the previous company, so we went to a new company. Sorry.
So item seven, approve service agreement with Reading Barrier Drive Solutions for the annual generator preventative maintenance for the 2223 school year. Again, an annual renewal, this is preventative maintenance on the backup generator for all rebuilding. Item eight is approve the agreement with SSI preventative maintenance on the high school dust collector fire suppression system. For the 2223 school year. Item nine is approve the agreement with Xylem Incorporated preventative maintenance of the high school sewer pumps. Again, these are all annual renewals. Preventive maintenance agreements. And item 10 is to award the contract for the purchase of the following items for the Burke's joint purchasing fuel bid. For the 2223 school year. So. They have commodity V back pricing will be awarded at a later date. It's basically based on the NYMEX plus added pricing, it's the lowest bidder. The hope is, and this is kind of a co-op of joint purchase with county. That the prices will become more favorable. So we'll see what happens with that. Item 11, approve the coach arts contract with AG Mara Company to upgrade a set of doors in the high school. And add interior locks to the middle school athletic laboratories at a cost of 6,700 dollars. This is an upgrade to the door hardware on a set of doors at the high school. The current hardware is causing issues and we need to convert to the newer style. The interior locks are for the middle school laboratories by the gym. We need to be able to lock the inner doors for security purposes purposes or when the outside doors are unlocked for scenes of events. This is part of the capital projects plan. And item I, we haven't seen this much this year, but approve a. The eye care benefit renewal through the PSEA Health and Welfare Fund. At no change in or increase in cost from the prior year. Item J, so designate Cbis Insurance Services for the PA. Of Pennsylvania for the 2223 insurance. Package, annual premium costs provided hopefully by the board agenda. So I did have a chance to meet or talk to our rep on Friday, currently having an 8% increase budgeted. I was hoping he would tell me, you know, we could probably lower that a little. But he said, you know, school districts in general have kind of fallen out of the graces with a lot of carriers. Just because the increase in claims, mostly cybersecurity and whatnot over the last few years. So that's, that's kind of the reason behind the increase in our policy premiums.
May I, before we jump into budget. I have just a couple of quick questions and I figure the flow will be better if I ask them now rather than the actual budget. Just question, everybody okay with that? Yeah, okay. Couple of items you mentioned that things were missed in the KCBA design and plans. So can you just remind us, I know we've had a review of this quite a few months ago in terms of all the different categories that things fall in. And which ones we end up getting stuck with versus which ones we can push back to them. Safe to assume that none of these can be pushed back to KCBA, given that they were remiss in not addressing them initially in their design?
It was actually more cost advantageous for us to do this individually than to do it as a change order, pay the change order fees. But particularly with the tile work. It was essentially the same, their, their Tyler was terrible. And so it doesn't make any sense for us to go through them, pay the change order fees. When we could use a Tyler that we trust to come in and do the work. Same thing with the locks. The locks is an issue, so we could go through the process of. Going through KCBA, going through Bracy, change order, it's just.
Okay, and they're, they're sort of required as opposed to nice to have, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Oh, the playground piece, can, can you just again reiterate or frame up? So the, back in September, the board approved basically 145,000 dollar investment in the elementary school playground. And then is this that we're being asked to approve incremental to that or is it discount from that?
Incremental. So the, the playground, if you can picture it. When you pull into the elementary school, to the right, there's a, we had a small basketball court there. There's an old, really old piece of furniture equipment there. That's where the, there was three different pieces that were going to be installed. Two of them were going to be there, and then the third was kind of going to be the corner of the new building. The, the company came out to install it and they did the one call. And when they did the one call, the place to locate it was right where the gas line was located. So we had to reevaluate that, and so we moved it so that now all the ground equipment is in one nice area. Really, the majority of this cost is for the surfacing, so because we had. One area and then a separate area, the separate area, we're just going to reuse the rubber mulch. And kind of save the cost there. This newer area, we were going to do that port, like that spongy play, that really nice stuff. That was going to be this area and then the rubber reuse or mulch is going to be there, since it's all together now. That port area will now be the whole scope of that playground space, which is the cost.
May I get into that conversation?
Sure.
The original design called for a four inch thick and not calls for a three inch thick with a, with a note. That. The school district is going to add an additional shredded rubber. I don't understand that, we went from a four inch thick, four base to a three inch thick. And I was going to sprinkle other stuff on top, is that what we're talking about?
Honestly, I'm not familiar with what you're asking.
What I'm getting at is the cost for the cubic foot of the. Smaller area is now about 12 dollars more than it was originally for a larger area, so I don't know how that works.
I can go back and ask, I'm assuming it's not, I'm assuming it's because of the cost of the.
Shit, Kenny, I had some numbers written there, you might be able to follow what I'm saying.
Yeah, I see it here.
Maybe, I scribbled it down, but.
What is it, put it on next month or is there a timing issue?
I mean, it's, it's a red.
Everything's there, so.
It's been sold.
It's been, it's been sitting there and they had to delay it because of the weather, it was too wet to bring the gear in, so that's.
Let me, let me get some clarification on that now, I'll get back to you.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
I don't have that.
I can tell you do it later, okay?
Yeah, no, I see exactly what you're saying, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, when I did this calculation, we're sort of giving an 8,000 dollar punch in there somehow. More than it would have been otherwise, I'd say.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So I, and I'm not sure what this additional roof fill should, whether it was to be supplied and installed by the school district, I don't know. What are we doing with that, where does that happen? On top of the three inches now, it's.
Where does it say that, Mr. Reckman? Where does it say that?
Yeah, where does it say that part of it?
It says it on the business H3.
That's because that was the old.
That was the old.
That was the, that was the original.
That was the original, but we had one.
So if you look, if you look, it says safety turf basketball play area, it was 2,480 square feet, four inches thick.
Yep.
Okay, now if you look at the renewal form where we're revising the area there, it has gone down to 1,628 square feet. So if you look at the, the turf, the three inches thick to be installed over the compacted stone base. So we went from four inches to three inches, but yet on the original here, it says, we're going to sprinkle something else on top, I'd smooth it through.
So a couple of things here, I hear what you're saying, I can answer some of it, I don't have the answer between Y, three and four. I don't understand that, I'll get the clarification.
Okay, well, what I'm thinking about is if we started off with four, from what a little bit of research I did there. The thickness of that is supposed to be, you know, safety thing, your kid's up here and it's this high, you need this much thickness. If your kid's here, then you can only do three, so I don't know. I don't think the height of the equipment has changed. So going from four to three, how did that happen?
So my guess is that the four inches is over top of the cattum. So they're going to, they're actually going to pour this over existing cattum.
Who's, the original location?
The original, H3. 2,400 there.
It's going to be over contact stone base.
So go, go to the second page, 2,480 and the four inches.
That's what I'm saying.
So that, that is poured over.
It says to be installed over compacted stone base.
I know, so part of it was stone base, part of it was cattum. The, the actual structure, there's the cattum there.
Okay.
So that's maybe why they had to do it better, again, I'll find out, and then the new space is, that definitely is brand new. And it'll be compacted stone, so I'm wondering if that doesn't need as thick because you're not going over hard surface. That being said.
Well, both of them say it was compacted stone, so I guess that's why.
Right, there's the one where the existing piece are pieces. That was compacted stone with that rubber tire stuff setting on top. But then when the additional piece was.
No, no, it says, well, it says, I think it means the. It says poured in place, I don't know, can I see that, it sounds like it's some kind of compound that liquefied or whatever, and so it's not just.
That's exactly what it is.
Yeah, well, both of them are saying the same thing.
Yep. So, so the, the first one of the 41,875 dollars, that's this.
Say it again?
The 4,000, the 41,871 dollars. Four inch.
Four one, yeah, okay.
That was the original poured in place.
Right.
That was for two out of the three equipments. The third one was going to get that shredded rubber.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we're going to move that third one, no longer do the shredded rubber and include it. As part of where this existing. Four, four inches thick stuff was. That's the additional, now to move that bigger piece and put it over there and have it included to all one port area. That's the additional 24,000, 25,000 to do that.
Okay, but again. Are we having two different thicknesses in each left area?
And, and that's why I'm going to find out, so the, the thickness. Again, my, my assumption is part of that thickness area is because it's over top of the cattum. This new area that's coming in, which is only three inches thick, is compacted stone. It's a brand new area.
If the new stuff has sort of been going in under compacted stone, which would have been a little bit more movable, somebody told that. Or add up to basketball, it'd be a little bit harder.
Right.
But three inches on top of that, the four inches over here. I'm just looking to go with safety aspect and any live, which may wear your fur, some keep correcting that.
Yeah, it's actually the flip flop, so it's four inches on the cattum.
Oh.
Three inches on the new stuff. Three inches on the compacted stone.
Okay, what do you even figure out?
I'll, I'll find out, I'll do some research, we'll find out, yeah, thank you though, that's a good question.
So again, may I ask, is there a reason why until we are clear about what we're getting and what we're paying for, that this couldn't be tabled? And then next month we'll ratify it when the answers to these questions have been made clear.
Do you want to 1000, don't you get them looking at that equipment that they're not going to get to do it before the end of the year?
No, that's not what I'm suggesting at all, I'm suggesting that I don't feel comfortable voting on something that isn't clarified. It doesn't mean Laura, work wouldn't pursue, continue. I mean, it's been, it's been underway all while when we haven't voted on it, I'm just saying from a.
No, it's waiting for this. The, everything has been delivered, they started drilling holes and when PA one came out, that's when they realized gas line. They couldn't do anything further because of the weather, they couldn't get the machinery out because of.
But if last week the weather had been nice, they would have proceeded without board approval and we would ratify it. So what I'm saying is, it's a little squirrely frankly, from a like policy procedure perspective. To be asked to vote on something when we're not sure exactly what that contract says and what we're getting and how much we're paying for. So I'm, I'm not tabling the project, I'm just saying like from a vote perspective, we should be ratifying next month. Rather than voting now when it's not clear.
Well, if that's the case, the original 2,480 square feet that we're talking about here would have been a cost of 50 dollars and 60 cents a cubic foot. If I calculated, but the other side was 62, 10 a cubic foot, I mean, you're talking about 12 dollars basically a cubic foot, why would that be?
Which one's more expensive?
The original, the original four inch thick area.
The new one is.
Would have come out at 50 dollars and 66 cents a cubic foot, unless I didn't screw up the math, I don't think so. And then the three inch area we're talking about now, it's going to be 62 dollars a cubic foot.
So the new area is more expensive. Well, it did say in here the price was good until August 6th, so.
That was the original one, I think, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, what she said was less expensive or no?
Yeah. We're trying to prove something that was, that was post-stated, predated.
We already approved this back then.
Yeah, but now we have a change order.
Yeah.
I mean, something just doesn't add up to me, I'm sorry for the confusion if anybody else is confused, but. I'm just looking at from the safety aspect, when I see four inch thickness rubber and I see three inch thickness rubber. I don't know how that relates to any safety issue that we may have.
Was based on how far, how far you will fall.
Right.
That's right, so like a three inch is like 70, a four inch would be 80, but again, just throwing numbers out there, but. I mean, it's a valid point, like.
The smaller playground that doesn't require.
Exactly, is, is it pretty sure.
I think it has mostly to do with the height, where the kids could fall from.
So, my question, and I hear what everyone's saying, but what's our alternative? We have playground equipment that is currently sitting there that can't do anything with it. I guess that's my, my question, I hear what you're saying Liz, but it's literally there, it's not like we're waiting for something to deliver and things can be changed. The pieces are sitting there, so there's literally nothing short of not installing stuff?
We don't approve it, do we return it and go? Don't have to pay for it?
Well, judging by Mr. Pratt's face, I would say that's hard now.
So it's either we approve it or we pay for it.
This is the.
This was, this was a gas line issue.
Yeah, that was a gas.
But the, the gas line, whose job was it to identify that the gas line was there? And that we shouldn't build, building or a playground over top of it?
Yeah, one call and whoever was in charge of the project, so I guess I would.
Yeah, but you can only rely on the drawings, so that's an old school, so sometimes those, Mr. Wetz could speak to it, sometimes those pipes are not included on drawings because it was done years before they found that to be important, so that may not be on any, on drawing, and get one call, that's their job to come out and.
That's another good reason for having facility drawings that are updated anytime there's changes to the, to the property.
Now we know. Don't add still. So, that's my question, what, if we don't approve it.
What does this, what does this do for the, what does this do for the project? Right, so if we, if we, if we delay this, if we table this for one month, for thirty days, what does it do, what does it do to the project? Could we lose our slot, I mean, I, I think it's one of the six, is this gonna be installed, put in the school year?
We're on schedule right now.
So, so again, I'm not suggesting we delay the project. I'm suggesting we delay the vote because the documentation seems to be perhaps not a hundred percent nailed down. I'm more than happy to support project, although I hate the fact that we're now spending a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for an elementary playground for a couple hundred kids. Um, but I'm not suggesting we kill the project, I'm just saying, ratify it next month. That doesn't mean work has to stop, that means we're entrusting the folks managing the project to dot the i's and cross the t's that Mr. Heffner is asking about, and ensure that by the time we go to vote, the documentation supports what you asked them to do and the price you agreed to pay.
And then if it doesn't?
Well, they can immediately correct it, I mean, if, if, if what we're identifying here isn't correct, we, it is ready, maybe this is just a typo, I don't know. But you know, if, if they can go ahead and put in what they think they're gonna go in and we approve this, but then if it's, if it hasn't really been correct, who's, who's checking this, who's making sure that it was installed first? Who's, who's inspecting, I don't know, this is state inspection, I mean, what, what do we need for school inspection for, for the health and safety of kids?
We have insurance company comes out.
Okay, so we don't have swings anymore, right? Why don't we have swings anymore? Because it's probably a safety hazard that would lead to debate not to incorporate swings. So this is a safety issue too here, they, you're talking about free fall onto a surface which may or may not be soon. And then we have a liability problem. My direct, Mr. Pratt, you could, you, you could, you could.
Mr. Pratt, would we be able to continue having the project go on without, without a vote this month, ratifying it next month?
I have no idea what the contractors would do based on the fact that you did not vote on the change order. I don't know what the contract states in regard to that, but in the, in the case, if you don't approve a change order.
It'll change it.
They don't make clarifications.
Which then leaves us with the fact that the project would still not be slated.
I don't know what the time here for you to install.
That's us. That's us. It took us, it took us, we, we ordered this in August and it took us till now to get it scheduled. So they leave. Yeah, we don't know when we'll get it back.
So is our concern the expense? Or is it concern the specs on the bid?
My concern is spec.
As far as money.
Yeah, I don't like the expense, but my concern is the spec.
Yeah, you're going from four to three, like.
So then is it, is it a, could it be a conditional approval? With that clarifying piece? A conditional.
Well, you're, you're worthy, let's listen to this.
Not, not knowing what the agreement is for the installment of this, there's usually language that does allow for continuation of projects. But yes, you, I mean, if you're not worried, you're worried about the money, I understand. All you need is an update on what's going to happen and whether or not it's gonna be a different way, that's not, it's not a reason to not agree to change order, it's just that now you give direction to whoever the construction manager is or whoever's running this to say, we wanna make sure what's going on, can you provide that information to us right now? They're gonna move forward with the project, but you wanna make sure that the, that everything's being taken care of to your liking, and that can always be done as the project goes along after you change the change order. The gist of the change order is to make changes here, whatever you want it to be, I mean, if it's a situation, you can just get, to get them to guarantee that this is what's gonna be done, and this is why it's being done this way. So, but can you do a conditional? Sure, you can do a conditional, but then what?
I mean, my, my concern about it is honestly, you know, many moons ago, when we did the, when we did the playset, when we created the intermediate school, there was a matrix for how much X you need or Y, right, like how much, how much depth you need in order to keep a kid from breaking his neck if he falls from this high, right, so.
Or at least we hopefully prevent.
Exactly, exactly. Always had, that's, has come in the profession, but you know, I mean, it is though, I mean, that's a concern, like you changed it from four to three, why did you change it from four to three? I think that's a, a very valid and certain answer, and incidentally, I'm, I honestly, I, well, I mean, I don't not care about the money, but I mean, the money is one hundred percent secondary to the fact that like, I don't want somebody shortchanging me, and we have a kid that falls, and now there are paraplegic or quadriplegic. Because somebody decided they were gonna try and jam us up by giving us the wrong stuff.
But, but the situation is the original contract, based on the quantity of, of rubber was fifty, fifty dollars sixty-six cents a cubic foot, according to my calculation, but now for the three inch, it, it, it goes up to sixty ten. I don't, I don't understand, they're gonna supply it at the same time, I'm imagining.
I would imagine, because when they bid it back in August, the price of goods and gas and everything else, and oil.
Yeah.
Look at the difference from now, August to now, that's a.
That I could understand, but I'm just trying to make sure that we get the right thickness for all aspects of the materials to be still relevantly discussed.
Fall height is the same on each piece of equipment.
Okay, so is it, does it require a four?
It doesn't say, it just says the fall height, they're all between eight.
How tall, I mean, how tall is the, how tall is the equipment, what's, what's the highest fall height?
Eight foot and eight two.
Okay, so, I mean, yeah, so they're talking about three inches, three inches of base and then an inch of like ground or, or rubber mulch?
So, with all due respect, we are in the weeds, like who is the project manager for this project? And if they're not here or can't speak to these answers, then in my opinion this gets tabled. This is not for the board, like our job is not to figure out fall heights and all that kinda stuff, it's to ensure that what we're approving makes sense. And if it doesn't make sense to enough of us, then it should be pulled and we move on. And it stinks if the kids can't get what we promised them, but much better to be adults and, and wait for the, the right time to give them what's safe than to give it to them and have some tragedy happen. Or for us to overpay on something.
This probably hit the answer, it's gonna be ratified.
No, you can't do an email.
Okay, can it be ratified? Yep.
Can, what, can what be ratified?
The change, the change order.
Well, yes, you can ratify the change order if approved by the board members.
So we can do the, proceed, I'll get the information, share it out with the board, and then we just ratify it in June.
I'm sorry.
I'll get the information, share it out with the board, and then I will, will, uh, proceed, and then ratify, as soon as, you know, and then ratify it in June. Fair enough, that way we still have to install it while we have the opportunity.
I, I would suggest that what you're saying is we're gonna basically table this down and then do it in June, or, or you could tell the contractor to proceed based on the conditions that we've identified here, and if they can give us an answer, the sooner they can give us an answer, the sooner we might be able to move forward. But just, I don't know, can we vote on this over there?
I'm trying to call them, I'm trying, trying to call them and text them right now. But yeah, we, we'll just proceed. We'll proceed.
Yeah, but we can't vote over the other.
We'll just proceed.
We're voting on soon.
I'll find out about what, four inches.
No, you can't, can't hold a Zoom meeting because those, those, those days are gone.
Hold a special meeting, you need two days, five days for a special meeting, we'll come this, and then bounce all the way to the other and get done.
Yeah. I'll get the answers and get back to them, just continue the project.
So we need a, we need a motion to pull that out of this.
Motion, we don't item, what is it?
Each.
I will item. We're, we're gonna remove it.
You wanna do?
Pay it one.
Okay, then that's the motion you need to make.
Can we just have sheets, right now we're just removing from the original?
Yes, you can have the original motion and the second to modify the.
Before you do that, can I take it from home?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be wonderful. This is at the work, would you mind talking about budgets?
Well, I'm sorry, I, I, I had a couple other quick questions.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, yeah, see, now we can stop. Um, okay, so number two, the elevator at the high school, so we're approving, we're being asked to approve Otis elevator to upgrade these high school elevators because the door operator systems have become obsolete. Help me understand, the building is less than twenty years old at my close? And the elevators that we bought twenty years ago, the door hardware is obsolete.
Those work.
Can we, like, Mr. Wetz, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but can you help us understand?
Yes, controllers for those are obsolete, they're no longer manufacturing the parts for them due to every other chip issue in the world. And there's a limited timeframe that they have, uh, extra capability to produce, or not produce, provide us with those, uh, they're estimating that we're in the last year of availability for having the door operators, if it fails, we would have to totally redo the elevator at the time it fails, which can take a couple weeks to order the parts, plus the time to install them. So it's kinda right now, we're in a dead zone with, uh, being able to get parts. If it dies tomorrow, we might not be able to get the current parts, we might, I'm not sure, they're just telling us we're within a one-year window, that would be completely obsolete.
Okay.
So we're trying to be proactive and do it this summer while we have shutdown time, uh, and get ahead of the curve.
Okay, helpful, thank you, so this twenty-nine thousand dollar investment in the door hardware, what is the elevator itself worth? So in other words, it's like you have to change your transmission on the car. So what's the, if the car's twenty years old, it doesn't make sense to do that? How, how much more life do we have out of the elevator itself?
Elevator itself's not a problem, it's inspected every year as required, pressure testing every three years, et cetera. If we have to replace a whole elevator, I guess it'd be at least a hundred and six to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, so the, the ex, uh, life expectancy of the elevator itself is what?
It, it, I, I don't foresee an issue with that, I mean, all, all inspections, everything else, you should be able to get sixty years out of an elevator, hopefully.
Okay, so it's.
It's just right now, it's electronic.
A close to thirty thousand dollar investment to get another fifty years or sixty years makes sense.
Or another thirty or forty years is more likely, probably, but, yeah, it's, it's absolute, that part of the controls is obsolete, that's part that controls your operators, calling the floors, and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you. The flooring of the middle school gym, so I think it's item number six. Um, so over the years, um, I can't tell you how many times this board has been asked to approve an expenditure in working on the middle school gym floor. It's gotta be five or six in the last ten years.
It's every other year for basic maintenance.
Okay, for maintenance, but we've also invested in above and beyond basic maintenance multiple times, correct?
Two big ones, uh, one was when the facility was flooded out during the twenty-eleven construction project. Uh, that was a case where the insurance basically paid for a new floor. And we also had the floor damage, oh, maybe six years ago, where they had to come in and totally drum sand and redo the floor due to dragging stones or whatever it was across all floor. Those were the two big items, other than that, it's been yearly, oh, every other year maintenance.
Okay. And the company switch is because the last time this work was done, we weren't thrilled with how it came out?
Yeah, we're looking for an alternate vendor, there's, there are not that many vendors that do floor finishing anymore, a couple went out of business over the last years. Uh, there's two or three bigger ones, I'll, there's two or three of them I'm aware of, we talked to different, uh, other facility managers in the Berks School County area, who they're using, uh, this company's done a couple floors for other schools, people were happy with it, uh, so I reached out to them for a quote.
Okay, thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it. I think that covers all my questions, thank you.
All right, so I'll move on to item K. Not too much to change since we had that budget meeting, um, mid-April. So approve the twenty-two, twenty-three general fund proposed final budget, totaling thirty-five million eight hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, it's currently requesting a three percent real estate tax increase of one point zero three two six mils um, as per business K, which is the PDE twenty-twenty-eight, which is the official form that it's required to be on. Um, some notables, um, again, this is the proposed final budget with a three percent tax increase as the worst-case scenario. Um, the budget made edits, this would be approximate real estate tax increase to the, uh, a hundred and eighteen dollars, um, again, that's, you know, the average assessed value of a hundred fifteen thousand that we talked about. Um, the increase can be adjusted to a lower rate, however, it cannot be increased, um, at final budget in June. So again, between now and June, we'll work on, uh, make an additional reduc, reductions to our expenditures, um, and we'll know a lot about any revenue increases, um, for example, I know today we did find out, we get money every year from the state, um, doesn't really decrease the tax, but it does help offset, offset, um, and decrease the taxes for those who have the homestead farmstead release. Um, every year we get a lot of chain tax revenue, not that I say, you know, advocate people to gamble, but, um, it does, you know, help um, offset some tax increases to those homestead farmstead properties, which is over fifty percent of our parcels within our district. So typically on average, I think last year we got about seven hundred and eighty thousand, uh, and I had budgeted seven hundred and ninety thousand. This year they kinda shocked us with nine hundred and ninety thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um, so all things being equal and just the assumptions, um, being correct, that would be about two hundred and ninety-three dollars per household. Um, that would have a reduction on their tax bill compared to about seven hundred and thirty that we see annually. So that would help, um, and then just some, something to note, the final budget scheduled for adoption on June thirteenth at six P M. The budget will be available to the community for public inspection on our website, um, and if anyone needs a hard copy, they can always contact us, we'll be available for them.
So I did have a chance to speak with the, uh, gentleman that is in charge of the playground, he said that uh, without, specifically right in front of him, he said these do fall within the, uh, fall zone parameters, he said his belief, you know, without right in front of him, was that the four inches, the compaction of four inches is greater than what it would be for three inches on the stone, so when you have the stone base, you only need three inches, when you go over top of the caddem, you need the four inches, that's, but he's gonna confirm it in the morning.
Are we going above the caddem, that would be, et cetera?
Yes.
So then we would expect to see a four inch?
Correct.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So he'll, he'll, uh, confirm it in the morning, we'll ratify it in June, be done, okay?
So what does that stand, uh, we table it or?
We'll still table it and then deal with it.
Okay.
So you need a motion to pull that portion.
Do that right?
We did that, okay.
Yeah, well, whatever.
I didn't hear it. I didn't hear a second, I didn't hear a second.
You heard the motion, oh, dude.
Second.
Thank you. Then we, we, we modify the, uh.
The original.
The original.
Yeah.
Yeah, answer right now.
So to kind of recap, our short call is currently at $342,000. For our proposed final purpose, as you'll see on my handout, uh, it's a $150,000 from teachers and then $192,000 of unassigned fund balance, um, so we submit data as a balance. Um, so right now that's, we have the two, uh, uses of fund balance to balance the budget, um, but obviously that can change between now and June. So that's all I have, I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Sorry, I thought you were done earlier, I apologize.
Sorry, I'm done now, I think.
Is there no more work on the state on how much we're gonna, 600 grams tossed out, it's a possibility?
Yeah, nothing, nothing yet. Honestly, if we have that by the final budget, I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, I wish I had.
So don't we have, um, money set aside for state budget delays?
We do.
Okay, so wouldn't it make sense to plug the hole with that money if we're waiting for this state budget money to come and it's not coming and we have earmarked money for that exact purpose?
So I can check on that from when it was actually established and set up and said, find out what the criteria was, so I don't know if that delay means if they don't approve it before June 30th, or, but I think it's if, if it's not approved on June 30th, that we, we use that money, I think that's why we basically don't use that money and then we go the unassigned route, um, but I can double check on that.
Okay, and, um, I guess this question every year about this time, so each year this district financially kind of has this pattern of, um, coming in with a favorable variance at the end of the budget year, um, of anywhere from $600,000 to upwards close to $1 million. Can you help us understand, based on what you see as of today, you know, May or even as of April, um, for whatever date you have access to good numbers from, um, what is that surplus, um, favorable variance, um, kind of looking like at this point?
Uh, it's not going to be $800,000 or $1 million. Um, I would say, just looking at it now, I would say transportation costs, they are about $300,000 more already at this time last year, um, so that's definitely a significant increase. Just our general operating costs, um, due to inflation, um, has gone up, um, so that's something I'm really keeping an eye on, I'm actually looking at it right now. So with that and then, I mean, they just reported today diesel prices are the highest in lifetime history, so that may cause me a little concern.
But fuel is contracted, correct?
Yes, but there's not a set price. So he buys it and he gets a discount because he buys it in bulk, so it's less than what we pay at the pump, but at that point, we're still climbing, but we're still a little bit cheaper, but from what we budgeted to what we're actually paying is still significantly higher.
Diesel is not included in the contract losses. We, we paid for that individually, but we purchased that through the bus company, that's part of there.
Okay, so our financial risk is insulated as it relates to the transportation contract, our financial risk is not insulated as it relates to the cost of fuel? Okay. So this is a tangent topic from today's budget, but I've heard that news this morning too about diesel and it made me think that it would, might be appropriate for this group of folks to start talking about what we might want to do, um, to plan for and set money aside for, um, the spike in fuel costs, which it appears we're not going to be able to avoid. So rather than just acknowledging, yep, prices are going up, and deal with it when the time comes, shouldn't we be setting aside X dollars, whatever the amount appropriately should be, to create a little savings account to help us pay for future fuel increases that we know are coming?
So you're gonna, we, we can take that into consideration, we do that fund balance when you approve the budget in June, final budget, you'll approve the fund balance allocation as well, so that'd be a good opportunity to, part of the budget, put it out there for that, that access.
And, um, you mentioned transportation expenses are like 300 grand more than last year, some of that has to be because we weren't busing kids through COVID when they were studying virtually. But we knew in our budget that, I mean, did we not budget for full transportation for this school year?
We did for this school year, and then what happened last year is we, we stayed gone as far as the two costs, but we still pay our contractor the full amount, had we been in session, a hundred and eighty to get our subsidy, the full subsidy.
Right.
Um, so essentially last year we really did not save too much on the contracted service piece, we saved on fuel costs.
Right.
But this year we did budget relatively flat, um, from last year to this year, um, but I, I don't think anybody was anticipating that increase in fuel costs.
Okay, so when you say transportation is up 300K, it's really fuel related to that transportation is what's up?
Yep.
Yeah, because that transportation figure, you, I mean, we know to budget the full amount every year.
Yeah, we have about a 2.5% contractual increase every year.
Yeah, okay. All right, so having said all that, what are you projecting, not eight or 800,000, what are you projecting in terms of, of favorable surplus?
I would say less than $1 million. I mean, I'll, I'll know, because a lot, a lot of things last year, like even transportation, for example, is projection versus equaling last year's numbers versus this year's numbers. The period in which we paid things last year, I think that's a big difference than we paid this year because we're, we're hybrid and we're not in session, so it's really hard to project, say, over the last two years. But I would say it's closer to that happening.
Okay, all right, but still, in my mind's eye, half a million bucks at the end of the year is great news. I mean, that number could be zero, but, right, so half a million of a favorable var- uh, variance is great news, and, um, to me, that should be able to help offset some of the concerns we have with having to tax our way into next year's budget.
Yeah, and a lot of it is, we didn't, we're not fully staffed, I mean, just state maintenance in studio, or Paris, for example, so it's not that we over budgeted, I mean, you always, you never want to exceed your budget, but a lot of times it's, it's the area that we anticipated being fully staffed and we're just not, so that's where a lot of the savings are, it's not, not that we're like overtaxing or have that intended surplus, it's just that don't work.
Right, right, but it, it's, that's for 500K of, of free cash, basically.
Fund balance.
Yeah, fund balance that now is available to be allocated to some of our other expenditures. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Get a roll call, please.
Can we, can we, uh, go separate?
We have to vote on table one.
What's that?
Do we have to vote on one on table first, or?
That was pulled out, that was, the motion was revised to remove that, table that.
To remove that?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, Ms. Hugh, you are asking what?
Uh, for item K, the budget to be voted on separately, please? And, uh, uh, one more quick question, I'm sorry. Um, health insurance, the health consortium, um, can you reiterate, I know you shared it with us at the budget meeting, um, where did we land with, what did you budget versus what actual it's going to be for the forthcoming year in terms of percent increase and how much of a cost savings versus what we thought we'd have to invest, um, do we gain?
Yeah, so, offhand, I'll look, I think we came at 1.5%, 254%, so that was a savings of 70, it was high 70,000.
So in your second bullet there, on page five, you, you referenced the school board and district admin will continue to work towards making additional reductions to our expenditures, right there, that says $70,000 reduction.
Correct.
Okay.
But that was in the summary of the presentation, the 194.
But the, the, um, budget, the 35.897 million dollar budget number hadn't been reduced by 75,000, right? So if, if we initially in our draft budgeted 4%, now we know that plug should be 1.5%, the net result of that saves us roughly 70 grand, that means we just gained seven, again, we, that's a favorable gain of 70 grand, that should, that should be a minus somewhere.
Yes, so that happened between February 21st and February, April 19th.
So you're saying you've already accounted for that in the numbers? Okay.
Yeah.
Give these, these numbers today, right?
We increased the force staff, which increases teachers, so it kind of offsets that, will benefit 200s. So the savings with our health insurance premiums really offset by increasing teachers, we increase the hourly wages of some folks.
Okay, all right, helpful to know, that that's where this dollar is closed, okay?
Right, uh, so sheets, would you like to amend your motion again to pull out?
Sure.
Letter K?
Is it K or is it L?
I'm going to use this. K. K, you go.
One second. I'm seeing K, which is a service level agreement for Berks County, is that the one you want to pull out?
You are looking at probably a little attempt at.
Oh, really?
K, you.
For 2022, 2023.
Ah, okay.
All right, excuse me.
It's the last item on the original draft.
Can we, we remove item H10, so maybe that was it, no, that wouldn't matter. All right. So we, we removed, we removed the playground piece, we tabled that, which is H1, and now we are voting separately, removing K and voting on that item separately. Are there any other requests?
Which item?
Oh, we didn't get that far yet, all right, so, hang tight. I love the enthusiasm though. All right, you good, Andrew?
I am so great.
All right, okay, so now we are going to vote on all items except for K. What? Oh, H1, yes, that was removed as well, so H1 is not on there, okay?
H1 is tabled.
It's tabled, correct.
Quality agenda.
Yes.
We motioned to table, but don't we have to vote on that?
No, you don't have to vote on that because the motion has been amended, you said.
So what we're currently voting on is everything except for K. Could I get a roll call, please?
Mr. Happer?
Yes.
Mr. Helen Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hean?
Yes.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Ragnon?
Yes.
Nine, eight, motion passed.
All right, now we are voting on letter K. Can I get a roll call for that, please?
Mr. Helen Hill? Mrs. Hean?
No.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stevitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Eichenhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Happer?
No.
Seven, eight. What's on the phone?
It's okay, yes. It's all right, I'm easy to forget. My mom said I had a face for a radio.
Seven, eight. You need a motion back.
Little fun. All right, superintendent's report, can I get a motion in a second?
Sub move has a few seconds.
All right, so we have, um, two presentations we have to do to see, uh, the first one's going to be, uh, Dr. Reese talking about special education, because we have to present to you a comprehensive plan for special education, uh, is a requirement that is part of.
Don't worry about that, I'll do it in a nutshell.
Department of Education.
Yeah, I can just like to hear.
She's going to share a couple of slides with you. They can wait, Dr. Reese.
I'll turn it off anyway.
That's not me. Don't look at me. You just go, we'll turn it off.
Yeah, we don't need it, we're good. Okay, for the special education plan, um, given the presentation is, thanks Mary, it's really short, because I knew by the time we get to this point, we do not want to go through 68 pages of literature, so, because they need Department of Education oversee the special education, and they're responsible for making sure that we're compliant and we have appropriate program within the district. So based on chapter 14, we redo the special ed plan every three years, so this special ed plan will be from July 4th, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. So what is the special education plan? It's our commitment, it's an action plan, and our commitment to ensure that we are providing efficient, appropriate, and solid services for our special education students and those need, here's your specially designed instruction. It also describes the special education program and all the services, so it describes all the services and the programs that we're doing for our K through 12 students. Now, how do you navigate the special education plan? There are 14 components, major components that are within the plan in the 68-page document, so it's not an easy plan document to navigate, so what I need is I need to do a cheat sheet. So during this cheat sheet that you have here, it's a couple pages, but each component of the 14 components, I have listed with the page numbers, and then under each part, I have a brief description of what that component means and what it is, um, sharing within the plan. It's in your explain slide here, special ed plan, special ed plan is 68 pages, in the overview is a cheat sheet to explain to you what each component is and what it means, and then the presentation is just what is the special ed plan? And again, it's our action plan and it's our commitment to our special education program, and then it describes in pretty good detail what procedures, what programs, and what services we are providing within the district. Does anybody have any questions? And here's a document, it is listed there for you, it needs to be posted for 28 days for review by the school board and also by parents and the community. When we come back in June, we will ask that you approve the special education plan, and then we'll send it off to the state. The state will review it, if they have any recommendations, they'll let us know, sometimes we just wanted to add a few things, or they say, hey, everything is ready. Well, all our programs are in here, if you have any questions, if you hesitate to email me, call me, and I can answer anything that you may find as you're reviewing the report. Any questions now? And I'd be happy to have this around if you want to move this document. Does anybody want this?
Dr. Reese, just high level, so clearly this is an exercise to, um, meet the mandates and recording requirements, probably also helpful for you and your team to have a chance to dig deep, um, every three years. Having done this for multiple years, multiple organizations, um, what differentiates brandy wine, if anything, um, in terms of what that plan might say about what we do particularly well or weakly to serve our specialized community?
I believe that the team of collaboration that we have, so it's not just me and the special education teachers, we're working very closely with all the administrators, with, um, central office, collaborating what are the programs or the supports or the interventions that we can put in place to ensure that our students are in the most restricted environment. As you see in the plan, we went from outside districts, we dropped by 24%, it doesn't sound like a lot, but that's huge when you look at the score, um, disproportionate, we're not disproportionate in many of those areas as far as at a district or at a classroom who are in the present day. So I think just that collaboration, you have a solid team that really cares about our students, so we're looking at, we want the best for students and everything to do to keep them in every regular classroom for that core amount, so I think that, um, is one of the key things for, for anyone.
Thank you.
Okay, we want to keep our students here, and if everyone doesn't work together, then our students are kind of pushed off to the side a little bit, so all the intervention, it's not just your special education, we're going to look for our whole student body.
Yeah, that's your question. Absolutely helpful, thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions about the program? The services, well, we do have a phone meeting, which is very helpful, so we don't just have one, it's probably also where we support, obviously, support life skills and social support, that helps, again, take care of our students, so we're based on their individual needs. It helps, again, take care of our students, so we're based on their performance.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reese. Thanks for summarizing.
I didn't want to keep you too long. If you want to go through the sixty-eight pages, like you have to, it's all important, Mike.
I'll come down tomorrow morning. They will keep you posted. So next up, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, uh, end of year goals, just to kind of recap the process. Um, so we create goals at the beginning of school year. Mrs. Eisenhardt is the goal representative. I know we're close to her, we present those goals in August. Uh, those goals then are reevaluated in the middle of the year before, before I get there. All the administrators' goals, then our trip is off of this district goal document. Mid-year, they provide a board update to the board of where we are. Uh, and then even all the administrators go through their evaluation process, and now we're at the end of the year. So I like to always do a, uh, a review of what, of what we accomplished. You have in front of you on your link, uh, a summary page. So the, the goals document is multiple pages. Uh, it's, it's highlighted in different colors for the different segments. There's four segments for the four goals, communication cooperation, instruction, safety, supportive learning environment, and then, uh, organizational efficiencies. Within those, there's some bullet lets get adjusted every year. So just to touch base on a few things as, uh, for saving time, uh, but to have everything, I just, but just for saving time, a lot has occurred this year. Uh, I give a hundred credit to the administrative team, for the entire district, for the teachers. Uh, there has been a lot of goals that were put in front of the, this, uh, team this year, and I believe we, we hit, uh, them all and did a very nice job of moving the district one step forward, uh, in light of all the negativity that we have right now with U S news report. Uh, website transition, transition to a new website, transition to a new communications school, uh, communications tool. Uh, we, we're transitioning to a new, um, student management system, which, uh, Mr. Volker talked about earlier, which is a huge undertaking. A lot of things on that communication technology side to help better communicate. Uh, now a social media platform with our website, uh, it's an app-based website. So a lot of ability to connect with our families and community. From the instructional standpoint, uh, professional development really surrounded around a, the, Department of Education can now have a new way to evaluate all professional staff, administrators and teachers. So a lot of professional development time was spent on that, uh, as well as student-teacher relationships. Coming back out of COVID, we just talked about connected transportation, but all the different models of education came back this year. Uh, and so this is, was really a, a main focus for us, is those connections and relationship building with students. Um, switching gears academically, we switched to a skill-based report card. So the mindset of A, B, C, D, F, or percentage grades is now switched over to here's the continuum of learning. Uh, and so that's happening at the elementary school. There was a lot of research that went into that, a pilot group that went into that, parent feedback that went into that, and now that's fully implemented and going very, very well. Um, we also have, uh, transitioned ourselves. Uh, we've been talking a lot about the intervention specialists. Those intervention roles have grown over the year. Uh, we have now interventions throughout the entire school district. It started just originally at the elementary school with three to four teachers, very manageable. Now it's district-wide, we've created a more systematic way of approaching intervention, uh, from the referral process to what does intervention look like for the classroom teacher, for the student, and it goes to fourth grade. And so that intervention process, uh, has been put in place. Camp Spark, we ran Camp Spark for the first time. We talked, we're gonna, we talked about, um, we're gonna talk about E S Y in a few minutes. Uh, E S Y extended school year is connected with Camp Spark. We have over a hundred kids signed up for that this summer, so that's gonna be ongoing for this year as well. Uh, and then, uh, we also put together a grade, grade book committee. So, uh, that, that grading committee really focused on how are we approaching grading systematically throughout the district? Some teachers wait grades, some teachers don't wait grades. And so we're in the process of finalizing that as, again, we switch over to a new student information management system. We had to delineate which way we wanted to go, weighted or not weighted grades. And so a lot of research into that, a lot of committee work into that determining which way. That hasn't been finalized, but that is to be, uh, implemented for next year.
Mr. Potter, quick question. Um, on that committee for grading, do you have representatives from the student body, from the community, from the parents, and from the board?
No, the, the grading committee, to figure out what we want to do as a school district, was a representative of different teachers across the district, um, whether that's core, encore, uh, all the different major subject areas are, uh, connected there.
Okay, so primarily internal votes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And so presumably, that recommendation will come to the board in the next month or two, if you're planning on implementing it.
The, the goal is, is, uh, June, uh, worst case scenario, it's gonna be August.
Okay, I just, um, again, because this board doesn't have a curriculum committee, I would just, um, encourage you and your team to try and give us as much, um, advanced input into what's your vision, what's your strategy, what does the research say? So that when you are ready to ask us to approve it, we don't have to do tons of research in a really short time in order to get comfortable with what you're recommending. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I absolutely understand what you're saying.
Okay, okay, I'd much appreciate it.
Yeah.
I, I read it in the superintendent's report, those bullet points, and I have a note, like to ask you about it. Obviously, we're running short on time, but the more you can tell us in advance, um, the more engaged I think we'll be in terms of wanting to support you.
And just thirty seconds, full disclosure, this is, uh, a project that is on an accelerated timeline. It is not normally in keeping with the way we like to run these types of projects. Uh, some things we did find, um, as we have been going through this student information, student information system transition, going from e-school to, uh, infant campus. Um, so it, it makes you turn over every single rock. And in doing so, and reflecting on current practice, this is one of those where like, we really need to make sure we, we better finalize what our grading practice truly is as a district. And we found as we were looking through district syllabi, hey, how you doing? We're gonna recognize her then. Um, as we were looking through the different district syllabi, that, um, oftentimes, the, the teacher's, uh, syllabus would say, as in keeping with district grading policy. And me, as, as the person that oversees that, there isn't one. So we needed to make sure that we went through, and, uh, admittedly, that kind of started in January-ish, and that's when we started internally within my office, doing a lot of our research to then quickly form a committee. Normally, a process like this would be a year-plus process. Um, but instead of trying to implement the wrong grading system within the new SIS, to then teach them how to use it the wrong way, to then transition it, this one is one of those that we are definitely, and I, I was very transparent with our grading, grade book committee. This is going faster than I would ideally like it to. Um, it's not going to differ in the end result, it is all quality work, and I stand by every decision along the way. That's gonna be actually great for our district, don't want to spoil too much. Um, but it is on an accelerated timeline, I want to be transparent about that.
Thank you.
So, uh, safety, supportive learning environment, uh, building projects, I think everyone knows, I talked about that, the facility updates. So, elementary addition, middle school project, uh, we, I think everyone knows, we're engaging through a carry for the third phase. Uh, so that's all going on this year. Folks, a lot of help, a lot on mental health, and so, uh, under Dr. Reese's leadership, we did quarterly mental health. Apparently, really, they, they weren't super well attended, all recorded, uh, but we have one more coming up, and that's gonna be a, uh, student family mental health, uh, and wellness event, and that's coming up.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you for that date. So that, that is, uh, Wednesday, uh, that should be a, a great event. Uh, and then finally, we did, we, earlier this year, we did the P D comprehensive plan of our guidance plan, uh, and then you just heard Dr. Reese for special education. Uh, operational efficiencies, I, I touched on this earlier, upon, uh, the student information management system. I can't, uh, reiterate enough the amount of work that has gone into that. That is a huge undertaking. Everything that is connected to the district, technology-wise, whether it's curriculum, or the phone system, or point of sale, or anything, is all connected back to that SIS. So all those pieces and moving parts and synchronization of the systems all have to be rebuilt. So that is a massive undertaking that's occurring right now. Um, we did a new, and a lot of trickle effects happened because of that. So new recruiting, human resources tool, new employee record management tool, uh, that's for existing employees, new evaluation tool, talk about that. Uh, Pete with the evaluation, fresh development that P D put together a new evaluation system, so that prompted us to come up with a new evaluation system. Um, we switched over to a new, we're gonna be switching over to a new food service management software. That's one that is the state sponsored software, the Miro Edge, that's connected with the new company that we have, that's our food service manager. Uh, that's recommending that, uh, new transportation modules, we're going to a cloud-based module, new online registration connection, uh, new family fee structure, so we're going from high school box stand on the campus now. Um, we talked a little bit earlier, at the very beginning of the meeting, when Mr. Womack was here, about, um, finding ways to reevaluate the structure in the school day and find additional instructional minutes to be able to remediate and support our students that are struggling, particularly in the high school. We have one of the shortest high school instructional days in the county, um, so how can we expand that? So a lot of work was done into that this year. We actually looked at a one-run bus run, but that was gonna need five additional buses, which was about a hundred thousand dollars a bus. So that wasn't gonna happen, but we were able to squeeze about fifteen minutes additional at the high school for some remediation time every day. So that, that will be from the board of June, but that is, uh, was a massive undertaking this year. Connected that was re-tweaking the elementary schedule to more formalize and support that intervention model. Again, to purposely capitalize on that time that our intervention specialists connected with the handbook and some of the work that we're doing interventions earlier. RFP process for the clean services, as you know, we went through that process, went a different route, but that was a, a big undertaking this year. Uh, and then we added a redundant internet connection. So right, currently, we had, uh, internet hardwire that went to the high school, and internet hardwire that went to the elementary school. But there was not one that went to the high school, to the elementary school. So a physical bonding has now been run from the elementary to the high school. So all three are now connected with hardwires. So if something goes down, someone drives into a telephone pole outside the elementary school, for instance, uh, we could back-channel that to the high school, back to the elementary school, and everyone's still up, up with internet. So that, that happened this year. And then finally, a huge celebration, uh, we just initiated the Brandywine Heights Education Foundation. That is, uh, something that has been a goal for many years. The Education Foundation is a way to, uh, create a nonprofit organization to directly support the activities of the school district. Uh, many schools have this, uh, this is the first time we've engaged in something like this, and the, the vision for this, the future of this, has, uh, so much to, to be able to offer. So that is a summary of the goals for this year. A lot, sorry. Where's your own? Okay, if I could just pause for a moment, uh, Ms. Walazowski just arrived. Uh, Ms. Walazowski, I hear you are recognized earlier. Tess, what were you recognized earlier for tonight?
Uh, I was conducted into the hall of fame, the athletic hall of fame. Yeah. Both my playing time when I was in the high school and, you know, coming back to teach and coach, uh, at the high school level as well.
Very cool. Did the girls win tonight?
Yes, they did.
All right.
Nine innings.
Wow.
Ten to nine.
Oh, my gosh.
Back and forth.
Wow.
Just one mislead, so.
Well, coming over, we have a, a placate here for you. Tess did thirty-two years for it, she is a physical education teacher. Uh, has devoted thirty-two years of her professional life to the Brandywine Heights area. So, so huge congratulations, and Mr. Afrina's gonna share a few.
I'm excited to be here. Congratulations on the hall of fame. Uh, I, I think, you know, when we look at physical education as a class, that is really the smallest piece where I can talk about what Tess has contributed to this. And what she's contributed in, in helping phys ed is tremendous. But that's a small piece of, of, of who she is. And, you know, I think where we are now with Mr. Shire working with her, the steps she's taken to mentor Mr. Shire, just to see, you know, the program that she's built over all of these years continue, uh, with Mr. Shire is tremendous. But, you know, I, I think I would be remiss if I didn't speak with, personally, what I think, uh, Mrs. Walazowski's greatest accomplishment and greatest contribution to our district is the home she's created for our local veterans. Uh, and anyone who has been with us on Veterans Day knows the amount of time, effort, and care that she puts into planning and implementing that day. I don't know how she's standing on November twelfth, uh, after everything she did leading up to November eleventh. And, you know, just knowing that, you know, we have sometimes upwards of close to two hundred veterans who join us, uh, on that day. And what she does to recognize, you know, those veterans, to recognize them home. And I think, you know, uh, I, I think about my grandfather's generation, the World War Two generation. Now I look at, you know, our Vietnam vets, and they remind me of what my grandfather was growing up. And I think, you know, when we look at how, uh, the Vietnam veterans were treated when they came home, a lot of them weren't ever welcomed home. And I think that one of the most amazing things that we do every year is welcome those veterans home. Uh, and, and I think it wouldn't be what it is if it wasn't for Ms. Walazowski. So again, all of the, the great coaching and athletics and phys ed accomplishments she is responsible for, uh, you know, I, I just think I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about just how truly special she is for what she does for our local veterans. So congratulations on your well earned time.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody, for supporting me over the years. I always felt supported and, uh, accepted and loved by everybody in this district. So thank you to the, to Brandywine for all the opportunities it's given me over the years. I've really enjoyed my time here, so thank you, Mr. Afrina.
Thank you, Steve, get over here real quick. Uh, agenda items for this evening, uh, E S Y, I talked about that earlier, twenty-five students for E S Y this year, a hundred coming to Camp Spark. Uh, B to F are curriculum items, uh, textbooks and resources, as well as, uh, updated curriculum under E and F. Uh, Ms., uh, Mrs. Kircher put together a presentation for you. Uh, one of the requests last time was to do some highlights of what changed in that curriculum. She was prepared to talk about that tonight, but I think for sake of time, we'll just continue to talk through. So thank you for putting that together, Mrs. Kircher, uh, that's it for this evening. Um, three clubs for consideration for this evening. Uh, there's been a lot of interest in creating a rifle team, uh, within the, uh, school district. And so a lot of research was done into that, um, as well as an esports club, a lot of research was done to that, as well as a fashion club. So the esports club, uh, Mr. Volker really spearheaded, uh, was able to get some grants to be able to get this, uh, up and running. Uh, as we see some of that decline in regular athletic participation, uh, trying, trying to find a way to engage with students in esports is one of those things that, uh, it may sound completely, uh, foreign to you. Uh, on the flip side, it's now becoming a very, um, mainstream? Thank you, mainstream, uh, event that is even at the collegiate level. So, uh, that is something that is a needed step for us in that direction. And then finally, with the rifle team, uh, that is something, again, that, uh, a lot of attraction. We have sixteen students that are interested in that. We partnered with, uh, Quits Town, Quits Town has a rifle team, uh, Brandywine had one in the past. And so, uh, in that attachment, you'll see a bunch of considerations from, uh, the, the safety component of it with, uh, with gun safes, with the rifles, uh, we'd be looking at five rifles with, uh, a separate gun safe for ammunition. Uh, they are, uh, small twenty-two rounds that are used in competition, they use the NRA, uh, competition rules for the rifle team. Uh, and when you, when you look at the rifle team, uh, we would be trying to attract and work with our local fishing gate commissions to host the team, to be able to practice at those events. Uh, we would be, uh, also looking for donations to be able to offset that. Uh, as part of that attachment, you, you can see the budget that's connected to that, or looking to offset the majority of that cost through donations and support from the community, local businesses, and those fishing gate associations. Uh, safety is probably the most paramount thing when we talk about something like this. And so, uh, the trick, the coach would be participating in the NRA training program for the coaches. That is this established, uh, process that's already there. Um, again, partnering with Quits Town and their processes, it's gonna be also a key piece. From the, the gun safe side of it, we would have all those guns locked, uh, as well as the ammunition locked in a separate gun safe. So everything would be completely secure, uh, and, and no risk there in that aspect. Um, I know it could be, I guess, maybe a little, consider a little bit controversial, but I think for, for this, uh, community and for the, the opportunities that it presents itself in terms of, uh, gun safety, as well as, um, the, the discipline of, uh, sport shooting, uh, it's a pretty unique opportunity. And to see sixteen kids already interested in this, uh, is, is pretty exciting for me to see that many students, um, already engaged in that opportunity. And it reaches a, maybe a little bit of a different cadre of students as well, that maybe wouldn't be involved in particularly a, a regular mainstream athletic event. Uh, and finally, uh, J is the- And finally, J is the approval of a flexible instructional day, so we were able to use virtual learning on weather days because of the emergency certification at this emergency permit at the state level, that goes away this year, it actually extends, next year we can no longer use it for weather, so we're gonna apply, this is to apply for flexible instructional days, the application's in there, this would go for a three-year application, and it'll allow us to use five days a year for virtual snow days, once we reach that cap, we'd have to go back to a traditional snow day, I'm trying to advocate to extend that, but at this point, that's what the law is, five days. Any questions on those items?
Mr. Parker, I have a couple of questions on the clubs, so, super excited to see the high schoolers, you know, expressing interest in a whole variety of new activities, fashion club, we have an advisor, it sounds like, and, you know, some kids who wanna re-engage the fashion show, which historically have been sort of, you know, legendary here at Brandywine, so, no problem there, and it's self-funding. Esports club, even at the BCIU, there's work being done, and they've been engaged as consultants or overseers of all sorts of stuff related to esports, so I've heard about that one probably for at least six or nine months, and the fact that we have a hundred and seventeen kids at Brandywine who have expressed interest, fact is roughly a twenty-five thousand dollar budget, but it's primarily technology, okay, and then a club advisor, okay. The one I'm struggling with is the rifle club, sixteen students with a budget of close to twenty-five thousand.
Correct.
So, I, I'm just wondering if Coopstown already has a program, much like how we send our kids to Coopstown to run track, even though they can wear Brandywine letters and represent our district, much like we, I don't know if we still do it, but we send cross-country kids to Ole, if I'm not mistaken, we've sent bowlers to Ole over the years, so that we can give our students plenty of opportunities, I'm struggling why we would invest ourselves rather than leveraging a partnership with Coopstown, you indicated we're partnered with Coopstown in terms of them teaching us how to do it ourselves, why wouldn't we just piggyback on what they're already doing?
Because of the equipment, they would not be able to support us, so they already have a max team, and they have five rifles, there's not enough to be able to sustain our students to come over there.
I'm just trying to compare that to other sports situations, so with track and field, for example, they've already invested in pole vault cushions and, you know, shotputs and all that kind of stuff that our kids can use.
That's correct.
Okay.
Ole, this is unique because there's high-priced items that only one, only five people can do at a time, and so if you double that, then there's no way they'd be able, physically be able to manage that.
So the size of the team, that there's sixteen, is it sixteen current high schoolers?
Yes.
Okay, and presumably not seniors, so that would be current freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. So sixteen out of three grades, do we have vision into what the pipeline looks like in terms of interest in the rifle club, so for example, if we invest in all of the equipment and the safety and security measures and everything we have to invest in, and five years from now, there's no longer interest, like, do we have visibility into that pipeline?
I believe strongly you will have a very sustainable program if you start, if we start this, if, if, let's just say it fails, the cost of a rifle isn't like you invested the money and then it's, you've wasted it, it's not like you invested in some kind of, something with it, you can sell those and recoup a pretty good amount of your additional investment.
Okay, so it's not like if it fails, we're red-tagging this stuff and losing our investment, you feel like it will maintain, the equipment maintains its value pretty well over time?
Especially a rifle.
Okay, and the consumables, maybe I'm ignorant about it, like bullets and things, are they reused or not?
It could be, there's not a chance.
Somebody has to go pull them out of a target.
The values of your, the high-priced items are your rifles, you've got to save them, that could easily be resold.
Okay.
There's a big market for that right now.
And in terms of coaching, who, or what's our game plan for coaching?
So, just to bring to some feelers, there's already two people that are interested, that we think might be interested, one is our
District staff?
Yeah, not within the district staff, within the community.
Okay.
Both have experience with professional firearms, as well as training firearm safety training, so there's, there's some really good, already inherent skills in these individuals that could potentially be potential coaches.
And those potential coaches, are their children part of this program?
One is, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I struggle with this one, just because to me, the mask doesn't seem to be there to warrant, I mean, we've done, we spent years trying to get a swim program up and running, which required essentially no investment by the district, and prior boards just really struggled to support that. Why would we so easily embrace this when it suffers from the same kinds of challenges in terms of small numbers of kids, this has a much higher cost of entry, has safety and security issues, it has all sorts of stuff related to it that some of other sports that we consider didn't have?
I think from a financing standpoint, it's gonna be much easier to get private funding for this, the local, the local riding gun clubs, I mean, I'm not trying to speak out of scores, speak what they make, they make a significant amount of money holding shoots, doing different things, and the vast majority of them are consistently looking for places to spend money because they're nonprofits, at a certain point, they have to give money away, otherwise they lose their nonprofit status. So I know, for example, when I started a volleyball club, I actually reached out to Merz Down Rond Gun Club, and they gave a very sizable donation for, for a volleyball club, this wasn't even something that had to do with what their core mission is, and it would have financed probably twenty-five percent of what the rifle team is looking to get. So I think that if we reach out to Alvarez, we reach out to Merz, now we reach out to Top, then we will find the funding for that, and it'll end up being a net zero, as far as revenue is concerned, with the possibility of, maybe they might be interested in actually, you know, funding us a little bit more than what we need, so we can maybe get some better stuff or get some more additional equipment.
So with that in mind, is there any appetite other than mine to suggest that this be approved as self-funding, and not pulling twenty-five-plus-thousand dollars out of the district budget, particularly for year one or two, until we can sort of prove the concept, if you will, and ensure that the pipeline of students and that the vision that we have for this program actually is achieved?
I hope the proposal does address the fact that they are seeking outside funding for the group.
Right.
The goal is to offset those costs.
Yeah, so, but, but, for example, that's the goal, what if that money doesn't come to fruition by July first, then the district would have to start buying equipment?
I think it's one of the things that, I don't know why it ever disappeared since we were the Brandywine Bullets, and we had rifle clubs playing music to begin with, times we differ, they certainly are mainstream right now, you might say, and I think you might be surprised, we have the local gun shop right here in town, which probably would be willing to somehow, you know, contribute to this, maybe as, maybe not be, just some services, you know, that he'd be able to form, you know, maintenance or things like that, he also has the Cabela's up in Hamburgh, I'm sure, you gotta buy ammo, you gotta buy targets, you gotta buy everything that you need there, you know, to be successful to do this, and I think Berks County is full of people that would be willing to contribute to that no matter where you live. I think that even our sheriff, Mr. Wheatneck, would likely maybe do a donation, a personal donation, knowing him.
Yeah, I love for these same organizations to donate books, or to attend our events, or to sponsor other sports teams like the volleyball club, when small businesses support something that then ultimately feeds them, as an example, guys sporting goods, they'd be crazy, or any sporting goods company, crazy not to support the district, because quid pro quo is, we might order uniforms, or baseballs, or two socks, or whatever.
There you have it, not only would the, we do that as a district, but when somebody supports somebody's kid in that respect, they're gonna go there and visit personally too, they're looking to attract business, and that's one where if, getting the business you're talking about.
Yeah, which, which in part makes me suspect of their, their donation.
Well, no, 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 I think you have a different vision of what, what is occurring today in today's culture, I, I can't remember exactly how many millions of guns, handguns, rifles, shotguns, you know, are sold in the last two years, for different reasons, of course, but it's very popular, let me say that.
Yeah, this is, this is a high school sport, totally different than, I think, what you're talking about, I have one more question, at least.
Right.
Around Berks County, will we, who are we joining, other than Coopstown, that has solid rifle program, and?
So, we would be in the Lehigh Valley Pro League, there's no school districts, so our southern Lehigh, Amas, East Stroudsburg, Urwick, Liberty, Freedom, North Coconos, Stroudsburg, East Stroudsburg, and Southburg.
So it's pretty popular in the Lehigh, okay.
And that's the league, that's the league that we'd be engaged in, there's a strong push to get traction in the Berks, and that's why it's, there's not enough to do a PIAA team right now, and that's why you have to go into this subgroup of the Lehigh Valley Pro League, and so, the Berks schools, I forget them off the top of my head, I apologize, because there are a couple Berks teams, and I don't want to misspeak, so if I'm wrong, I apologize, I believe Hunter Wise was one of them. I forgot, there's three or four in the Berks County that have a team, because I'm obviously a new school.
This is just a club, does that mean that we can, does Ole have to be a high school?
We would establish it as a high school club. We could look there, but that's, that's the model, we'd have to look to see if there's competitions that are within.
Is the coaching position a paid advisor slash coach?
That's what we put in the proposals, that it would become a paid position, that'd be good, it would cost us a lot extra, it's decreed.
And what's the compensation for that, parent slash coach?
We didn't identify that, we'd have to identify that, put that into the co-curricular approval when we get to the fall, maybe commiserate with what the other fall sports would be.
So is this a club, or is this a sport?
It's a, it's a rifle team, which would become a PIAA team eventually.
Okay, so initially, we're approving it as a club.
Right.
It would potentially, with momentum, morph into a sport.
Correct.
Under the auspices of the athletic program.
That's right, yeah, it's a weird thought, because it could fall under PIAA, but because there's just not enough teams right now, but that's the goal, yeah, as a sport.
Thank you for engaging me, I'm, I'm struggling, but we can move on.
And with the effect of our insurance, liability insurance and stuff, now that we have that team?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that one, we have to find that one out, we'll look into that.
I mean, that would increase.
As in, an insurance professional, what do you think? I mean, it would have to.
Possibly.
I'll find out when we report back.
But that cost isn't included in the program expenses projected, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns?
We can move on that one separately, please.
All right, so we have a modified motion.
Whoever has the item, this is the idea.
Sure.
In a second?
Yes.
Oh, okay, perfect, all right, so we are voting on all items except for letter G.
Can I just do one more?
Oh, sure.
On enrollment report, I just, I didn't include that in the weekly update, but I will begin to do monthly reports with the number of teachers, we talked about monitoring that first, second, third grade classroom, so right now, everything is remaining steady from what we originally proposed, so let's continue to monitor that, and if any adjustments need to be made, I'll recommend that to the board.
All right, could I get a roll call for all items except for G?
Mrs. Heem.
Yes.
Mr. Rightower.
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz.
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer.
Yeah.
Mr. Sidavner.
Yes.
Mr. Happner.
Yes.
Mr. Honshel.
Yes.
Mr. Wyman.
Yes.
Nine eight, motion practice.
All right, could I get a roll call for letter G?
Mr. Rightower.
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz.
Yes.
Mr. Stupitz.
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer.
No.
Mr. Sidavner.
Yes.
Mr. Happner.
Yes.
Mr. Honshel.
Yes.
Mrs. Heem.
No.
Mr. Wyman.
Yes.
Seven eight, two nades, motion practice.
All right, moving on to personnel, I'm going to try and edit off here, could I get a motion to approve everything except for letter F? So, sheetz.
Second.
Then could I get a second motion for letter, so.
Second.
All right, good, all right, moving on.
All right, so just a few items on the personnel this evening, Mrs. Seitman, our assistant business manager, is going to be resigning, she's taken over a business position at Coopstown, we have the resignation, resignation of one of our student custodians, unfortunately, it didn't work out, that student wasn't able to begin with us, Dr. Reese has submitted her letter of resignation, I think the board's well aware of this, but Dr. Reese has served in this school district, has directed people services for several years now, and has done a phenomenal job, I keep telling her, she's made the program personal, and so, thank you, Dr. Reese, for everything you have done, you were absolutely the breadth of pressure that we needed for the special education program, and we wish you best luck at this school district county intermediate unit as a special education director. That opens up a door. That opens up a door, so, Mrs. Vandy Kircher, in the back, is going to be transitioning her role from curriculum supervisor to director of people services, she comes with a depth of knowledge in special education, teaching special education at the, within the school district, teaching special education at the collegiate level, she has her administrative degree in administration and leadership with a concentration in special education, so a lot of experience is there, and we're excited for Mrs. Kircher, so, there you go, Mrs. Kircher. And it opens up another door, so Mr. Sabrina will be shifting roles from the intermediate middle school principal to the next step in his professional career, which would be taking over as the curriculum supervisor in Vandy's previous position, so I know Mr. Sabrina is very excited for this opportunity, and will do a phenomenal job, knowing the level of detail and the connection that Mr. Sabrina has within this school district, he will do an awesome job with the curriculum supervising position, so Mr. Sabrina, congratulations. It opens up one more door, what are we gonna do with the intermediate middle school principal, so, we're gonna advertise, we're gonna notify parents after tonight's vote, so that's public knowledge, let parents know, and then we'll go through, advertise the process, and take some next steps for hiring that position. Under appointments, we have a recess cafeteria aide in this school district, which is wonderful to be able to find a wonderful person, talented person for that role, we are looking to hire Ms. Becker, this is connected back to the resignation of the assistant business manager, she will become the supervisor of financial services beginning May twenty-third, we also have a list of student summer help, so the student custodian through the school year has worked phenomenally, and again, I thank the board for encouraging us to do that, this is going to be an extension to that, and we've done this over the last couple of years of student summer work to help us over the summertime, we also have an approval of another summer worker there, under C two D, and then, finally, we have two leaves for unpaid leaves, one's medical leave, the other one is because the individual exhausted all their paid overtime off, but that was due to a previous medical condition as well, so, the policy with unpaid leaves is, myself, the superintendent can approve five in policy, and then after that, the board has to approve the rest of the unpaid leave. And finally, the, in discussions, the board completely recognizes the effort and the value that Mr. Volker has brought to the school district over the last nine years in his current position. in his current position. He has done so many positive things to develop and grow this school district from a technology, curriculum, communication, and otherwise. As a professional partner, it's been wonderful working with Mr. Volker over the last nine years. And so through that process, the board has extended a contract opportunity as moving from assistant to the superintendent, to assistant superintendent, which would require a contract. So the item tonight is to approve Mr. Volker, which we talked about voting on separately, but to approve Mr. Volker as the Assistant Superintendent, starting July 1st. Any questions on personnel?
Very none. Could I get a roll call on all items except for F?
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Stupit?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Ivener?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Ninety-eight, motion back.
All right, could I get a roll call on letter F, please?
Mr. Stupit?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Ivener?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Ninety-eight, motion back.
All right, could I get a roll call on letter F, please?
Mr. Stupit?
Yes.
Mrs. Walizer?
Yeah.
Mr. Ivener?
Yes.
Mr. Happner?
Yes.
Mr. Hollenshaw?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Mr. Wrightauer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wyman?
Yes.
Ninety-eight, motion back.
Is there any additional public comment? Very none. Any additional more discussion? I do need to announce there was an executive session before tonight's meeting to discuss personnel issues.